All three incumbents are unopposed. And nobody knows who's running against Ann Marie. Do you know without the real person? There's no big picture of that.
She hasn't made any.
I can't find it.
They say your slides.
That's all we're seeing.
I met her.
Oh, okay. So she is the real person?
The real person, I met her and, and, uh... Alright, so I'm gonna, um, double check the screen.
You're joking.
Alright, Mayor, um, we're unmuted. And, uh, we're ready to go when you're ready. We're live.
Yeah, I'm waiting for, uh, Rick Mark to join us.
Okay.
Sorry for the late arrival.
Oh, you're alright. Okay, uh, Tony, it looks like we're all here.
Okay, I'll do a roll call.
Yeah, yeah, that, that would be great. Uh, let me call, well, let me call the meeting to order first. And, uh, remind everyone, uh, that, uh, is watching and listening that they can provide, uh, input, uh, through, uh, public comment at LincolnCity.org. Or actually come into the chamber and, uh, testify or, um, make comment with the computers there in the chamber. We can accommodate that. And, uh, go ahead with the, uh, roll call, Tony.
Okay, Anderson?
Yes.
Casper?
Here.
Hinton?
I'm here too.
Hoagland?
Here.
Mark?
Yes.
Parsons?
Here.
Thank you.
Alright. And, uh, Mr. Mark, are you able to do your video? There you, whoa, alright. Little, little mountain scene.
Oh, I, I can't see it myself. Why am I not seeing it?
Oh, I don't know, it looks good.
Okay.
Alright, well, thank you. Uh, we're gonna, uh, pass on the Pledge of Allegiance just 'cause we don't sound good, uh, synchronized, not synchronized. Uh, we have a consent agenda, one item on the consent agenda. And it's the, uh, minutes of the special meeting, September twenty-first, 2020, at ten AM in the morning. Any, uh, questions or corrections on those minutes? If not, uh, entertain a motion.
I'll move to accept the consent agenda from the, uh, September twenty-one minutes.
I'll second.
And there's a second from Counselor Hinton, thank you. All those in favor, or any further discussion first? Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor? Say aye.
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 Opposed with a nay? Hearing none, thank you very much. Alright, uh, next agenda item is actually the, we'll pick up on the deliberations for the COE Phase Two appeal. And if I could, uh, get us started with a little, uh, script. The public hearings for files, the COE Phase Three files, S U B twenty-twenty dash oh one tentative plan, P U D twenty-twenty dash oh one preliminary, and final plan was closed on September twenty-first, 2020. Wrote, the record closed on September twenty-eighth, 2020, at five PM. Additional materials were received from opponents, the applicant, and staff. But first, uh, does any member of the council wish, wish to declare a ex parte conflict, uh, communication, conflict of interest, or bias in this matter? I don't see or hear anyone. Mr. Hoagland, uh, can you come on to the video?
Is it required?
Well, we'd like to see you, yeah.
Well, but is it required?
You know, Mr. Apicello, is there, uh, I guess not, with phone, we'll accept phone.
Yeah, I, I think if he doesn't wanna, uh, reveal, you can participate, uh, by voice.
Alright, well, uh, try to get my attention then, that I won't be able to see if you have a question. Thank you.
I'm just eating, is all, so.
Okay. Um, so we've gone through the, uh, bias, um... So the, the applicant, does the applicant waive the opportunity to submit final written argument after the close of the record as provided in O R S. Section one nine seven point seven six three, paragraph six E?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, this is, uh, Mr. Housley again on behalf of the applicant, and we do waive final argument.
Great, thank you very much. Uh, okay. Prior to or during deliberations, council may consult with city staff and the city attorney. Please do not ask staff or legal counsel for new evidence. Does the ci- city attorney or staff have any comments concerning legal issues raised during these proceedings, instructions, or the applicable, applicable law or legal advice concerning the application of the law to the evidence of the record?
Uh, Your Honor, uh, Council, I'll just point out that I did talk to, uh, the planning director and, uh, he and I, uh, he sent a memo with an additional condition, which I believe, uh, was entered into the record. And I, I believe I'm correct in saying the applicant is in agreement with that condition. Um, so I, I think that's, uh, part of the record, we should have a copy of that. And I believe I sent it to you earlier today.
You did. Um, I guess the question I would have i- is there, um, an opportunity to ask any questions about that? Information that was provided?
You can ask questions of staff about the evidence in the record. You can't ask questions about what's not in the record. So, if you wanna know, what does this condition mean, or what does that condition mean, we can answer that. Uh, but we can't go get for you additional information.
Okay, alright, thank you. Uh, Mr. Mark, uh, Counselor Mark, did you have a question?
Yeah, this is gonna sound like the same question, so, but, you know, I'm just not clear on the process, so... Uh, we also received, uh, a comment before five o'clock that, um, referred to a statement from the fire marshal. So, can we get an answer from the, um, developers as to whether that issue regarding the fire marshal is, will be addressed, or can be addressed, or how's that work?
You're, you're, uh, need to unmute, Mr. Mark.
You cannot hear from the applicant, the record is closed, the hearing is closed. Um, you can hear from staff. Um, I believe that, uh, there is a communication from the fire marshal, there is also, uh, communications from a, um, opponent, I, I'll say, um, basically characterizing that communication. I think if you read the communication from the fire marshal, um, it's pretty clear. And I think, uh, the opponent took some liberties with what it said. Um, that's my analysis of it. Uh, Mr. Townsend, if you wanna weigh in, I, I don't see it as changing, uh, anything. I believe there is already a condition approval, uh, about restricting, um, the, both sides of the street from parking. Um, correct me if I'm wrong.
Mr. Townsend, do you wanna?
Richard, you're muted.
I'm trying here, I'm switching between screens. Um, yeah, there is a condition of approval that says there should be no parking on Streets A and B and on, uh, Marine, uh, within the development. Um, I got the sense from the fire marshal's, uh, comment that he would like to see no parking on the entire length of Marine, which, uh, I think, uh, uh, can, can be accomplished. I think you can, um, I don't know if you can require the applicant to do it, but you certainly can probably tell the city to do it.
And I, I think we've talked about before, the, uh, traffic regulatory authority of the city council is delegated to the city manager. We've been talking about restricting access on streets that aren't sufficient width. And the, uh, city, uh, manager's already taken action regarding to one street where he, um, ordered that no parking be permitted on either side of a street due to the narrowness of the lane. So, certainly, we have the ability to do that under our own authority.
Okay. Thank you both. Um, so this matter is returned to the table for deliberations and recommendations. So, uh, now we would be in deliberation on this matter, picking up from our last twenty-first special meeting. Questions, comments, um, thoughts? Counselor Hinton?
Okay, um, I just listed out, out, um, the things that I would call, um, for myself anyway, conditions, um, that could be added. And once again, it's, um, the traffic impact study or analysis, just because we're adding that many more, um, potentially adding that many more, um, houses and cars to those streets. The other one is, um, to preserve more trees, as many as possible, rather than clearcutting the entire area. And I under, like I said at our last time we were together, I understand how this is a difficult landscape and how, um, you know, especially to, to, um, install all the, um, infrastructure, that a majority of the area would have to be cleared so that the earth moving could happen and all that. But still, I think fifty-two trees is a little on the weak side, considering there are almost not, um, eight hundred of them. And then, um, another one is the full landscaping plan. Right now, it's just kinda circles and, well, it's a little more than circles, but... But that needs to be completed. Um, an improved cut and fill plan, I know that's out there, and we talked about that last time. I just wanna make sure it's on your list. And again, a request that the roads be public. I, um, just don't have enough confidence, there's not an HOA, um, organized effort right now, and I just don't know how those roads will be maintained. And, um, also a reminder, um, from North Lincoln Sanitary to make a requirement of adequate space being dedicated for three bins. I think perhaps at the time you, um, put your project together, we had two bins, recycling and garbage. We now have a third bin that is mandatory, which is compost. And seven is provide adequate buffer, space surrounding, or some kind of sound-reducing landscaping, or some sort of, um, a little bit of buffer between, um, the project and the, um, the sanitary trucks and all the noise that comes from the glass bins for recycling and all of that. And then, you answered my next question, um, thank you, which is a timeframe for building the duplexes. It sounds like five years is the agreed-upon timeframe, and that's better. And, um, I have a question, but I'll come back to that, but, um... And I, I just also want some kind of assurances that this will be built. Um, and I don't know if you're working with the builder now, but considering how much building is going on, I would think that that would be something that you would do, um, that could be done ahead of time and not wait till the last minute. So, I just need more assurance that it's actually gonna be built. And then, just a request to, um, as I call it, treat the neighbors with respect. Allow them to drive out first and demonstrate an effort to keep the noise and the rumble and the dust and mud to a minimum as you can when you're in the building, or the excavation and, and logging. And, um... I just, um, I can't remember, um, if there's an agree, and part of the agreement, if the roads will be repaired, I think by the end of the project. Did I, do I remember that correctly?
There's a condition that, uh, any damage they do to the roads during construction has to be repaired.
And then, I'm assuming that throughout the time, because this is two years, two years, and one year, it looks like now, that if there's some large potholes or something in the interim, before the end of the project, that, that'll be maintained throughout the building and the excavation and the logging. Those trucks and equipment are really heavy, they just do a real, they do real damage on those smaller roads. A lot of people will be using them, even the loggers, I mean, they'll not wanna go through the roads. And I, I can email these things to you if you want, Richard and Richard. But those are the things I think that would make this project, um, uh, you know, one maybe without so many questions, and actually a better project.
Could we, um, and, and maybe, uh, Richard, uh, Mr. Townsend, would you, some of these things are already on the conditions, uh, are they not?
Um, yeah, the, uh, full landscaping plan is in condition number two.
Yeah.
Um... Um, but there is not a condition, I don't think, to add a traffic impact analysis. Um... Preserve as many trees as possible, that's the existing law. Um, they will need to go through the process with, uh, Public Works Department on what trees need to be cut. Um, that's essentially the, I mean, that's the, the baseline from which they have to work. Um, now their grading plan may end up with removing a lot of trees. It's calling for removing most of the trees. Uh, I don't know if, uh, when they actually do the fieldwork, they'll find out that, uh, fewer need to be taken or not. But, uh, the idea is to, um, remove only trees that are necessary for the work that's being done. Um... The cut and fill, um, there's supposed to be a plan for cut and fill, there's a condition for that. Um, but there's no requirement that there be an absolute balance. Um, but obviously, you wanna minimize the amount either taken out or brought in. Chances are, I think, most of the flow will be out from this site. Uh, public roads, I'm, I'm almost certain that, that Marine is a public road, as is Sixteenth. The only two private roads, I think, are, that are proposed are A and B. Um, and, um... I guess if you want a condition of approval that they be public roads, you can impose that and, uh, if it's justifiable under, uh, the approval criteria. Um... Space for three bins, I, you know, the bins will be there presumably for like twelve to twenty-four hours. Um, um, I don't know whether there's space now or not, or what's being proposed. I mean, it's, uh, pretty much a normal thing.
But, excuse me, Richard, I didn't mean to interrupt, I just, um, wanted to underline that there are three bins now. I think most designers or architects though built are designed for two, but we have three. And so, I think it's an important point.
I, I think if there's, if there's trash, uh, enclosures or something like that, then, uh, yeah, that would make, obviously, it'd make a lot of sense that they would want to have the space for three. If it's just things that they're bringing down from the garage or, uh, uh, you know, the side of the house or something, um, you know, that's probably a matter of, uh, um, preference or something. And I, I don't think the driveway is gonna take up, actually, they can put them in the driveway for that. I don't know that driveway's gonna take up so much space that there isn't room to actually put the bins. But, uh, it certainly can be a condition, we think it's important. The, uh, buffer and landscaping for the North Lincoln Sanitary, um, I don't think this goes right up against North Lincoln Sanitary. It's very close, and, uh, the, uh, yeah, I, I assume there will be noise there. Yeah, that's a, uh, in a way, it's a market decision from, uh, the developer deciding that that's, uh, gonna be acceptable or not, or what, what kind of spacing they can do back from the, uh, uh, back from North Lincoln Sanitary.
I, I can't-
in a national site.
Sorry, I was just going to say, I think we made that condition on another project years ago, when their residential is, right, cozied up to industrial, especially one that starts at 4:30 in the morning.
Yeah, well, whatever, you know, obviously, you can impose whatever conditions you think you as a, as the council believe are justified under the approval criteria. You mentioned the five years, the condition 44, I assume that's okay with you. Assurances it will be built, that's sort of what the five years is about. Obviously, we can't force people to build things. We can say you've got a deadline, and if for some reason you don't do it, we're going to rethink the whole thing, which is what that condition does. But, you know, market conditions change. We saw that with Bayview. That was going great, then the market collapsed and took a long time to recover, but it's, you know, now being built out. And treat the neighbors with respect. I'm not sure how you put that in the condition. I think it's certainly a good admonition, but I don't know what we can do legally with that. I mean, any of these things that, if the, if the whole council, or, you know, majority of the council wants to have a condition and they, and they can relate it to a particular approval criterion, be necessary for that criterion, I don't, it's all doable. As, as we said, a couple of them are, at least two or three of them are already there.
Yeah. Well, thank you. That's what I wanted to make sure that we had some already covered. Mr. Hobel, you got your hand dusted?
Yes, thank you. I was looking at the traffic impact study, this for 2017, and the crash data ends at 2018. So, you know, and part of it states that, you know, I just think it's important that that be updated to 2020. I'm trying to think of when that, how it was redone or was completed, you know, that is a kind of a choke point. And without being an impact study or crash data including that, I think that's giving, that's padding those numbers a bit lower than what could have been off of Southeast 16th and 14th there for that traffic. So I have concerns of those two things.
Counselor Mark?
Couldn't somebody help me understand the, I know what a private road is, I know what a public road is. I'm not clear on the costs and benefit, the benefits and the, you know, what, what do we get, what do we lose as a city? What are the, what are the concerns there? And is there a problem with making them public roads? Does that harm something? Or I don't really understand the issue very well.
Mr. Townsend, can you help?
Get back to the right screen again. You know, a public road is, is built to city standards and is maintained by the city. Private roads do not have to be built to city standards, and often they're not, often they're built to a lower standard. And they're not maintained by the city. They are the responsibility of the property owners.
The property owner may establish an association to maintain them, or the property owner may in fact just be the one responsible, one, you know, corporation, one entity for maintenance.
So, Counselor Mark, I would assume part of it is trying to reduce overall costs of development, so that they, you get the lots a little less expensive to build.
So, I, I want to second Counselor Hinton's concern here. For one thing, it sounds like, I am a little concerned about the narrowness of, I'm not really clear on which roads are, which roads were the 20-foot width, and the fire marshal did express some concern about that. The other thing is, I, I lived on a private cul-de-sac 20 years ago and had about five homes on it, and, you know, pretty nice homes. But I tell you what, the idea that we were going to have to pay something to fix the road, that was a little scary to us. And I think that might have been a difficult thing to achieve. So I do have a concern there.
All I would say is a buyer, it would certainly be made aware as a buyer buys the property. So it's part of a marketing plan. You know, you'd have to know what the HOA covers or what, what would be the owner's responsibilities. And I think typically, you look at those, and I don't have the flat map in front of me, but they're not through streets, and you divide up the costs by the owners on the street. So 16th is different, that's, that's kind of a through street.
And then you got to sue somebody to make them pay up if they're not paying their fair share. So I see, I see problems there.
Remember, counsel, this is not your project to design. This is a quasi judicial application. It's only a question of whether or not they comply with the requirements of the code.
Well, we could add that condition.
You can add the condition if it achieves compliance with a criterion. Which criterion are you attempting to address?
I don't know. Safety?
That's...
Meeting the fire code?
Even the fire marshal didn't say that it was necessary to meet the fire code.
Yeah.
And thanks, attorney. I'm really trying to understand the parameters here of what we're doing.
No, that's right. And I think there's a fine line of trying to design and trying to, as the attorney has said, meet the expectations of what our ordinances have in front of them and make sure the project fits that, those guidelines.
I believe that we've, the conditions say, you know, parking on either side of the street for A and B. And as we discussed a little earlier, we have a traffic regulatory authority we can use on the, the other street that's outside of this Marine, I guess it is.
You know, I have a question, Mr. Townsend, maybe you could help me a bit. The staff suggestion on this five-year build-out, you know, is a, is a nice, appears to be a nice idea, that five years after the subdivision is finalized to be built, the vertical houses built in it. But, you know, if we're doing that to somehow mitigate, you know, runoff and, you know, lack of vegetation and that kind of stuff, I don't see how that, that does anything. You know, if the market changes, for example, and they're not able to build and sell homes, you know, by just simply pushing a, you know, a line and saying, okay, from here on out, you know, all, you know, you have to go with the current code and changes, that still leaves, you know, in essence, a, you know, the original concern of vegetation lack of and that kind of stuff. So I'm, you know, I appreciate the attempt. It's kind of what I said before when this came up, is, you know, going to move a lot of dirt, going to have to move a lot of dirt. You know, you'd hope the market would stay with us, so homes could be built. But I don't, I don't see that this accomplishes what the ultimate goal or desire, I think was Counselor Hinton bringing it up. And I, and I don't have a suggestion, but I don't know, you know, unless for some reason you have a fund to go plant trees or something. Mr. Abcello?
Well, this condition was not about Counselor Hinton's concerns about the property being vacant and having erosion. I believe that that's probably better addressed by the stormwater and other permits that have to, you know, get, be obtained. And then, you know, part of that is they have to seed areas where they, you know, altered the property and removed trees. This is a requirement of the planned unit development section of the code that says the planning commission is supposed to review the reasonableness of the proposed timetable of development. And because this is a planned unit development and not just a subdivision, that includes the vertical construction. It is consisting of what the applicant proposed because the five years doesn't start until I think the recording of the final plot and had a 2026 date in their proposal. So it does work, but what the trigger is, if they don't do it by the time they say they're supposed to do it, it then gets re-reviewed for any changed circumstance. It may not have anything that can be changed, but it is in there as a protection against essentially giving away your police power. You don't get vested for ever, you get vested for a reasonable period of time.
Okay.
For a certain provision in the statute, it's about subdivision infrastructure, which is accepted. That's what that is about. It's not about stormwater runoff and things like that.
Okay. Well, thank you. And could we go, then, the traffic study discussion? Is there some kind of provision, how frequently traffic studies should be, or how old one could or should be to bring forward in a new phase?
Well, my understanding was the traffic study was not required for this because the trigger wasn't met. They did, however, offer traffic information, provided that. So in order to address some of those concerns that were expressed.
Okay.
I, I need to point out also that one of the things about the market, there was a lot of discussion at the planning commission about, about how ambitious this was and how they demonstrate that they had buyers. That is not an approval criterion. So it's relevant to whether or not the timetable that's proposed is reasonable, but it's not an approval criterion.
Right. Did other counselors have thoughts? Because they, there is that couple pages of conditions, suggested conditions of approval that the staff has put forward. And, let's see. And we were going to add the $50,000 to that in assistance from, for improving highway or 16th Street. And then match up completion date with our approval date, if that occurs.
Mr. Townsend, did the $50,000 condition not make it into the list of conditions?
I believe it did not. But we certainly can, can add an appropriate one.
Well, it was, it was sent in by the applicant, and apparently we didn't add it to the list.
Okay, well, it's, it's in the, it's in, it's in the record.
Right.
It's in what the applicant sent, but it's not in the, the list that, actually, I just pulled out of the staff report.
Yeah.
But it is in the record, so it is before the council.
And then it would be this other, the one today, the five-year to build out after final approval of subdivision would, could also be added? As the applicant indicated, if that would be all right, okay? So, Scott? Counselor Hinton, oh, Counselor Mark?
Not to belabor this, but am I right in recalling from the previous discussion, this goes back again to the fire marshal's concerns, that even whatever we approve today, that plans, actual building plans still need, would still need to be submitted and still need to meet the fire, fire code, basically. The fire marshal still has a say. Whatever we do today, we're not shutting down the fire marshal's approval. He still has a say on...
Right, and on the condition of approval number six that we proposed, or they just proposed, the plans, final engineering plans have to show compliance with the 2019 Oregon Fire Code 503 and an appendix D for fire, and it goes off the page, I can't switch back to it, but there is, there's conditions specifically addressing fire compliance, plus also the condition saying that streets A and B should have no parking on both sides.
Thank you.
All right. Counselor Hinton?
Okay, so my original list has been narrowed. So now it's just at this list, the traffic impact study, the roads A and B to be public, and to make sure there's adequate space for all three bins. I think that's easy. We don't have to argue about that. And to try as we may to have some type of sound buffer between, you know, if, between the industrial area and the, and the project area, and that's it.
So, yeah, I would agree. That's what I showed still. Counselor, could you talk a little, I guess, I'm a little confused with it, not that I disagree with a need for, but that your buffer and sound protection and all that kind of stuff, why are you not putting the burden in essence, it's a marketing aspect? You know, someone who's going to buy those houses near the industrial site or whatever, clearly can see them, and, you know, the developer may or may not put landscaping, sound wall, whatever. Why are you in the design business?
Well, it's not design. I'm not going to say which bushes or trees or, or walls or whatever would be the best sound buffer. I'm just trying to, and I think, now, this actually points to a need that we have in updating our comprehensive plan. We need to be able to provide for those zones that go from one to another, especially when you're talking about an industrial zone to a residential zone. And especially one that starts at 4:30 in the morning and the all other types of noises throughout the day. It wouldn't take much to add a few trees or bushes or a wall or whatever it is to actually provide that, and I think it should be in the conditions.
Yeah. Again, what I haven't heard from you, isn't that a developer builder's decision? Because if, if it's not there, likelihood it's going to be a lower-priced product, last to sell, not sell at all. So I applaud the desire to assist the developer and make sure, you know, they're aware, but like I say, it's pretty visible. So I guess I'm really, really questioning the, what appears to be an overreach of the government, not that...
No, we've done, we've done this kind of thing before, and I don't think it's a big deal. I think what we're trying to do is acknowledge that we're, you know, we have one zone budding up against another, and they're incompatible, so there can be some, there can be some accommodation for that.
Yeah. Counselor Casper?
Yeah, I just have a question, my, yeah. Can you hear me? Yeah. I have a question about the private versus public road in, in this development. Is there an advantage to the city assuming the, those roads, those streets, as opposed to leaving them for the developer to attend to?
There's a disadvantage, it's going to cost you to add to your maintenance of the first.
I think the advantage is the assurance that...
I think the advantage is the assurance that the maintenance is done.
But it's not a public street.
Well, a public street, it is a public street.
No, it's not. It, I mean, it doesn't go, it's not a thoroughfare, correct?
Right.
Right.
It's the dead end to the housing. It's like.
Right. So I don't understand why, why the city would assume that maintenance.
Right.
I don't believe staff had recommended that it be a public street.
Okay.
I think if the applicant wants to propose it, they can, but we're not, I don't believe, Richard, correct me if I'm wrong, I don't think that staff has that as a condition.
No, that's not.
Okay, that's what I wanted to clarify. It's not a condition that's listed on this list.
No, the benefit of having one owner to send a notice to saying, you know, your street's in disrepair, that's, that's an advantage to the city. I mean, you know, one owner or one association that's in control of it will get a notice that they're, you know, in compliance. A thousand dollars a day for violating, you know, the terms of your development approval, that gets some attention.
Counselor Mark?
So there are a couple of apartment complexes nearby. And if you drive into those apartment complexes, I assume those are private roads that get to where the parking is for the apartments. But you have an apartment manager and you've got a landlord, somebody who has pockets and can fix those roads. Here we're talking about individual homeowners. Are there other neighborhoods that have, that are like this, that have private homes going to, private roads going to individual homeowners?
Now you're, you're entering into an area that hasn't come into record yet.
Yeah, I'm just asking to be informed.
But yeah, there are. There are in town.
Did I answer that?
Not with any specific acts.
So like, yes.
And they aren't always maintained is the other part of it. So in the big picture, and this HOA is not standing. It is, it's not running. There is no HOA. There's no one that's going to do that. And sure, you need people to do it. Well, they already have Phase One in there and a couple of Phase Twos if I remember correctly. And there's still no HOA.
There's a thing called the transfer from the developer to the association members and that usually doesn't occur until there's quite a lot of developments. So that doesn't mean there is no association. That just means it hasn't been transferred to a group of property owners. It just means it's developer controlled.
Right. So I guess, you know, there's a number of, or a few items that it sounds like would want to be added to a condition list. It might be worth taking them one at a time to see, you know, if they make it to the condition list, that be an appropriate process? Okay. So the first one appears to be a traffic impact study is, has been, I've heard two councilors anyway at least talk about lighting, wanting to have one. This project does not require it because it doesn't meet the criteria. But I guess I'd like to ask, at what point would this traffic impact analysis be used for a future decision?
That, you know, the question of whether or not a traffic impact analysis was required was for this decision. It's not required for this decision. Why would, for what, when would we use it as, if it's a condition of approval?
When? If we need a light? So that would be something that would have to be planned for and work with ODOT about more signage, the usual stuff. Maybe not particularly for putting in hopefully more housing in this area, although it should be. And I think that that's another topic that we can talk about later is allowing the timeframe to lapse between Phase Two and Phase Three and then come back and build them together. I think that's on the city.
So again, there are, appear to be three routes out of this subdivision, this PUD, 16th, then out to what is it, 14th to 101 and around the other way, all the way around or to East Devil's Lake. So East Devil's Lake has the light. And so, you know, if you're desirous to not wait for traffic and not turning right, you know, you'd go around in East Devil's Lake. So the unit count of units doesn't require a traffic study. So I think Mr. Appicello's right in asking the question, you know, how would it be used for this project? That's, that's why it's not a requirement. So is there, you know, and Mr. Appicello, you're right in asking, you would continue why and where the criteria is. Counselor Mark?
I just wanted to back what you were just saying, Mr. Mayor. I, I know if I'm, I've already, I mean, if I'm in that neighborhood and I want to go south on 101, I go around East Devil's Lake Road. If you want to go north, it's really not a problem. And I've talked to quite a number of residents, many more residents on 19th Street or off of 19th Street than we're talking about here on 16th Street. And my understanding from even communicating with ODOT, tell you the truth, is that the likelihood of getting a light there at 19th Street is essentially nil. There's no, there's never going to be a light at 16th Street based on that information. So I don't really see the point of the traffic study as well.
So anybody want to make a motion on the traffic study? Seeing none? Let's go on and the public roads, A and B to be moved from private to public? Counselor Mark?
I, I would like to see that as a condition, but the attorney said I need to come up with a reason or a criterion. So how do, how do you do that?
I, I'm not sure how to do that in this instance.
Your concerns, your concerns are valid, Counselor. You know, but again, that's what buyers, you know, need to think about. You know, their HOA dues and what it covers and, you know, it's all part of the buying process.
Isn't it, isn't it part of our responsibility to avert a situation where, and we're talking about housing that it's not going to be cheap housing, but it's not going to be high-end housing. And, I mean, everybody feels like they're living on the margin of, you know, I can barely pay the mortgage. And then, and then HOA, do we know there's going to be an HOA? History of, I'm familiar with a lot of HOAs that have a lot of trouble collecting their dues or, or having a board that, you know, follows through on collecting the dues. I just see, I just see the possibility of problems there.
Counselor Hinton?
I'd just like to remind us that our last meeting, we were told that we could add this as a condition if we wanted to, if we all wanted to, or the majority of us, I guess. And again, I don't see, I don't see an HOA. I don't understand what an HOA would do in this situation. They're just, it's infill and there's, I mean, I just, I don't see it. I don't see it now and I don't really see how it'll work in the future.
Counselor Casper?
I don't, I don't see that as a, as an issue for the city to be concerned about. It's a, it's a design, it's a developer issue. I think there'll be things coming down the road that we can't anticipate. And an HOA or whatever the guidelines or criteria might be will be developed as the need arises. Otherwise it won't be a successful development, let's face it. So I, I still don't see a need for having, assuming the public portion of these roads under the private development.
So is anybody wanting to make a motion to add it as a condition?
I'll make the motion. I move that Streets A and B are built to public standards and are then afterwards maintained by the public, by the city.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second to add private streets A and B to be made public and maintained by the public and forward. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed with a nay?
Nay.
Nay.
It would sound like two to four for a nay. All right. The third was the buffers, adding some kind of a buffer requirement between the industrial and this project, industrial zone and this project. Counselor Mark?
Mayor, I thought you made a good point on it being a market decision. I do remind people that North Lincoln Sanitary pointed this issue out to us with their concern that they're going to be subject to complaints down the road and, and I would like to be good neighbors to North Lincoln Sanitary. But I don't know if I want to say this quite, but you know, you said it might, it might keep the prices a little lower and maybe that's something the city needs to favor. So I don't know that I would make it a condition.
But, and again, I don't disagree with the desire and the need. I think that's a marketing decision the developers will, will have to make and, you know, as they look at it going forward. So if somebody wants to make a motion, now would be the time.
I think I wouldn't get enough votes.
Yes, you know, you don't know until you try. Counselor Hinton, make the motion.
Okay, I move to add as a condition that when developed these, I don't even know what to call them, duplexes, attached units, whatever they are, that are closest to the North Sanitary, have a buffer and some type of sound buffer is what I'm talking about.
There a second? Not hearing one. Okay. Thank you, Counselor. All right. I guess I'm, I'm wondering, Counselor, Mr. Appicello, to, do we officially need to add the 50,000 to the list or by, by virtue, we should do a motion?
Well, it's, I think it's in the record, but I, I think if we added it as condition, whatever the next number is, 45, I think, that would be appropriate. The one question I had about that is, I don't know that it says that there's a $50,000 voluntary contribution. And basically, as was explained, we could use it to do an overlay of 16th if that's after construction and all the log trucks go through. But I didn't see the timing for when that would be submitted. I have to assume it's before final plat approval, but that, what I guess would be at the outside. Richard Townsend, is that something we could amend or just add that to it? Because there has to be a timeframe for that contribution.
Yeah, we can amend the proposed condition any way you want. If you want to put in a, a time period, like, you know, before the, you know, within a certain period after the grading is completed, that kind of thing might be appropriate.
Yeah, I figured if it's final plat approval, that means the infrastructures are being constructed. So.
Okay.
That should mean that any kid with that money would then not get damaged by log trucks.
Right.
Yeah.
That's the only thing I would add.
What would be a reasonable length of time after final plat approval?
I'd say 60 days typically is when you have to submit things to comply. You know, here's my final plat with all the signatures and that kind of stuff. So, yeah, I, I think 60 days after final plat approval.
Okay. All right. Could someone make that motion to have added to the condition of approval, the 50,000 voluntary contribution towards 16th Street to be applied 60 days after, not somewhere within 60 days after final approval of the plat?
Mr. Mayor, I move to add $50,000 to approve 16th Street within 60 days of final approval of the plat.
And that's accepting the applicant's offer?
Accepting his offer.
I'll second. And we have a second from Counselor Parsons. All right. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Opposed with a nay? Hearing none? All right, thank you. The other note I have is, or a question, maybe remove from the conditions, the requirement of a building permit before eliminating trees? I've got a question, Mark, from that.
Well, remember there are two exceptions in the tree protection ordinance. One concerns infrastructure development, the other one concerns construction pursuant to a, on a, on a lot. So you don't have a lot yet, so you can't pull a building permit for it. So it, this works is that the grading plan is going to be the first source of just how many trees are going to be removed. And then at some point, there are going to be some trees left and a plat will be recorded. And then at that point, there may be additional trees that get removed pursuant to building permits. That's just simply the way it works. I don't know there's anything wrong with mentioning that in there as long as everyone understands that it's a kind of a two-step process and that second exemption really doesn't come into play during subdivision development.
So I guess all I'm questioning, because I don't have it in front of me, is does that condition need to be reworded before we approve the condition?
I'm having the same computer. Richard, do you have that condition in front of you?
I'm looking for it right now. Condition two is about landscaping. Condition three says trees to be removed. trees to be removed shall be removed in compliance with LCFC 17.52.220.9. Beyond that, I'll have to look a little more. There also is condition eight. Says that prior to issuance of any structural permits, any site work, any construction activity, or any demolition, clearing, grubbing, or excavating, a combined public works permit application shall be submitted. And it also shall be submitted with each and every structural permit application. All right-of-way work plans shall be noted on the approved plans and performed. Mayor, do you have a, do you have a particular?
No, I just, I don't have anything other than I have a question mark when we talked about it on the 21st. And I just want to make sure the wording in the document was as you're okay, we're okay with it.
I don't think what Richard read changes what the ordinance says.
Okay. It's that two-step process.
Well, again, the second exemption really only applies to building permits, which does, is not for infrastructure development.
Okay. Because my notes, I didn't see any other things that raised to the level of needing clarity. And I haven't heard counsel raise any other issues. So, you know, at that point, you know, I would, let's just, no further discussion, would make a motion, entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I make a motion to approve the recommended conditions of approval as altered during our discussion.
Although.
Yeah, there's a, there are, I believe there are recommended bochens at the end of the staff report in the packet.
So we're going to, do we need to approve the list of conditions first? I think that's where.
Yeah, if that's what your intention was, fine.
Yeah.
Yep. So she just wants to approve the condition as we've amended now. Is there a second to that?
A second.
We have a second from Counselor Parsons, thank you. Any further discussion on the conditions? All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
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 Opposed with a nay?
No.
One nay? The conditions pass. Nay was Counselor Hinton. And moving on then, motion to approve the project? There's some wording.
I believe if you're on packet page 12, that's the start. There are three motions, one for the tentative plan for the subdivision, one for the preliminary master plan for the PUD, and one for the final master plan for the PUD.
Mr. Mayor, I will move to approve the tentative plat for S U B 2020-01, a 40-lot planned unit development subdivision as submitted.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second from Counselor Casper. Mr. Townsend?
It should be subject to the conditions that you've just approved.
Good point.
Thank you.
You'll think that amendment?
When it got to the end of that, I started to hesitate, yeah.
Okay.
Subject to the conditions.
And Counselor Casper, is that alright with the second?
Fine.
Any further discussion? Should we do roll call on these, or not?
Yes.
Okay. Can Tony help us?
I can. Anderson?
Yes.
Casper?
Yes.
Hinton?
No.
Hoagland?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Parsons? Motion passes.
Thank you. Second motion? Keep going, Counselor Mark, you've got it.
I will move that we approve the preliminary master plan for PUD 2020-01, for the lot plan unit development subdivision as submitted with the identified conditions.
Second.
We have a second from Counselor Parsons, first from Counselor Mark. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Anderson?
Yes.
Casper?
Yes.
Hinton?
Yes.
Hoagland?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Parsons? Motion passes.
Great, thank you. And one more.
I will move that we approve the final master plan for PUD 2021, a 40-lot planned unit development subdivision, provided they meet the conditions that we identified.
Is there a second?
Second.
From Counselor Casper, thank you. We have a motion to approve, and from Counselor Mark, and a second from Casper. Roll call, please.
Anderson?
Yes.
Casper?
Yes.
Hinton?
Yes.
Hoagland?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Parsons? Motion passes.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Alright, thank you, gentlemen. Okay. We go to.
Your Honor, we'll come back with final orders at your next available meeting.
Okay, great, thank you.
This is a tentative decision of the City Council.
Alright, we have public comments at this point. Any, are there people in the chamber, Tony?
Yes, there's folks here, I'm sorry. They're here, I believe, for the annexation of the Woods property.
Oh, okay, well, we'll wait on that, then we're doing public comment right now, general.
Okay, is anybody here with general comments? Okay, if somebody wants to speak about the evacuation.
Now would be the time.
Now would be the time to speak about your concerns about the evacuation. Come up here and. So yes, we have somebody here.
Alright, thank you.
So. Just taking a name for the record.
My name's Fran Lonan.
I'll have you sit here and either speak into the microphone.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Fran Lonan, and I'm here about the evacuation response. I know we had several letters from people about the evacuation, but I do not see them on the website. When will those letters go into the website?
Well, actually, they're being collected for an after-event briefing, which staff has had, and council will have next week. And then an official, you know, kind of report will come out.
Okay, so those letters will be put in with the work session? Is what you're saying? Okay.
Yeah, the council will see them.
Okay. And who is the project coordinator for this particular process? Because it's going to be very detailed.
So, you know, this really isn't a time for back and forth.
Well, then I'll just save that for the work session meeting, never mind.
Yeah, and that would be, you know, we've been going out, we're asking for the public to put written documents, written into Ken Murphy or Chief Jerry Palmer. They're coordinating the after-event briefing. So we'd ask you to put it in writing, so that council would have it when we do our work session.
Okay, and then also, when you're having the work sessions, who is going to be invited to those work sessions? Is Spectrum and the hospital, and possibly the radio station? Seeing as how, seeing as how we had issues with them, it probably would be a good idea to have them?
Well, let me help you again. We talked about this last meeting.
Right.
But what, we were not calling the emergency, it's not the city.
It is the city according to ordinances.
We are, we are gathering information and will be our observations and suggestions, and we'll be putting it forth to the county emergency group.
And in that group, is the hospital there, the radio there?
You know, I don't, I don't know.
That's what I thought.
Which is provide information that we have observed and suggested.
Okay, well, it might be a good idea to have them, since they were, we had issues with them.
Okay, thank you.
So it might be a good idea to invite them.
Okay, thanks, thanks for the suggestion. Tony, is there anybody else with general comments?
Yes, sir, one more person.
Okay, great, thanks.
Hi, good evening, Lisa Corzine.
Hi, Lisa.
Hi, I have a comment that I would like to, that I'm kind of confused by. I wanted to see if there could be a, if the council's going to be thinking about it. Again, a decision, and that was for the cutting of the budget of the North Lincoln Fire Department. Since we've had this fire, that would be my thought that y'all would think about, you know, not doing that.
Lisa, let me help you right there. We have nothing to do with North Lincoln's budget.
Okay.
They're a special district.
Okay.
And they have their own budget and property taxes. So that would be, you know, their provision. They're not a department of the city.
Okay. So, so urban renewal is not taking money from them?
It's not taking money, it's not reducing their, you know, current budget. You know, if you want to.
Now go ahead.
Oh, if, you know, we can talk about that. This really isn't the point, if you have a statement about it, please make it. But I just want to make sure you realize that it's a special district, separate, special district.
Okay, so they don't get any money from us, okay.
Yeah.
Alright, alright, that sounds right there, okay.
Thank you. Alright.
Alright, sir, that's it.
Thanks, Tony.
Welcome.
Mr. Chandler, do you have, did you get some comments in?
We did. We had six public comments that came in. You have received copies of all six of these. And I had sent them to Tony to enter into the record. One is from Mr. Leon Woodrow regarding the 24-hour rule, which is asking where is the science? The remaining five all pertain to the, to the Echo Mountain complex fire. These have been also forwarded to Ken Murphy and Jerry Palmer, so that they can be included in the evaluation of this emergency. But because they were, came to public comment, I've got them for tonight as well. One came from Doug Pullen. And the idea is to update the tsunami sirens with voice and siren capability with battery backup of family power. One came in from Leslie Green. That they felt helpless because they could not get information, and the city played zero part in helping to keep them informed. One came from Carol Rolfing. Suggested that Lincoln City manager or emergency manager contact all local AMF and broadcast stations and request they broadcast emergency information to keep the public informed.
Mr. Chandler, I'm sorry to interrupt, but I was trying to get, get your attention early on. There have been several requests and several complaints about not hearing, from people not hearing their comments being read completely because they can't see them and they can't hear them. And so I would just request that you read them in total.
That's a decision by the council, I'm happy to do that if the council desires, desires me to do that.
I think we need to do a little trust building.
So it appears that five of those, again, you know, people are reaching out to get comments in. In this case, it'd be five going to the Echo Mountain debriefing, and you would see them. I guess in the 24-hour. Counsel, do you thoughts? You've heard from Counselor Hinton? Counselor Hoagland?
Yes, hi, so I definitely have heard that as well, that people don't feel heard, or they're, at least it's not, at the very least, it's complicated. They feel like if they write to public comment at LincolnCity.org, it will be read. And we've said multiple times, they're not, they're not to be read. I've, you know, I've heard that in more meetings, you know, that just as a reminder, this isn't, this isn't typically what we do. So if there's a clear way people would know, there's two things going on here, you can enter something into the record and you can have something to be read aloud. And especially with the COVID-19 and people not being there in person, I feel like when the popularity of public comment at LincolnCity.org kind of coincided with us not having public meetings. And so I think it felt from the beginning that that would be read, and they haven't been read. So it's going to take quite a lot of time, but I think if they were here in that three minutes, you know, they would, they would want to say the same thing.
Well, and I disagree, we are having public meetings, just so, you know, even though, you know, we've had public meetings all along.
Right, I'm sorry, Zoom, Zoom meetings.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, yes.
Okay. Anyone else? Yeah, Counselor Parsons?
I'm just on board with those two, I'd just like to add that if people are having an issue wanting to come in here, obviously, we're not all even coming in here, and we're asking people to come in here. I think it would be smart to maybe look at letting them join these meetings, say what they need to say, especially if we're able to control the muting and kicking people out as need be or what have you. But letting them just come have their three minutes like they would if we were all here, means we're not here. That might do sense.
Thank you. Counselor Mark, Counselor Casper? Yes, Counselor Mark?
I appreciate when people come into council chambers and address us in person. And I think, I think if they're willing to do that, and we have plenty of time for them to do that, I guess. I guess my concern about inviting people to send in email, I mean, I have no trouble inviting people to send in emails, but with the assumption that they're going to be read, could be very time-consuming. And I'd like to, I would rather see them come in in person if they want to have their, make a full statement.
Counselor Casper?
I, I agree with Counselor Mark. I, I too would rather see people come in. I appreciate the comments and the time they take to, to write us. If somebody sends a comment to me, I usually respond. We are going to read all of these comments. Anyway, they do come to us. It's sort of like a social media. If you feel it should be read and sometimes it's condescending or it's, it's your own personal opinion, that, that's fine. But it could be directed to us and we will read it. And I don't think it, it needs to be highlighted as a platform for disdain and vindictiveness. I, I, I see that. I'm comfortable that we hear from people and if they want to pick up the phone and call me, I'm very happy to respond. We, we do value their input. And if they can come to the council, that would be fine. I would appreciate that.
Counselor Parsons?
I just want to say that in a roundabout way, we're asking people to do something that we ourselves are all not doing.
Exactly.
That's what goes back to allowing them into these Zoom meetings for their three minutes. I think that would take care of some of the emails if they just felt like they had a voice. And just back to the beginning of this meeting, you wanted Counselor Hoagland's picture up. So I think it says a lot that we're actually seeing the people give their statements.
I guess, Counselor Parsons, are you suggesting something different?
For the future, I think today, that they, there doesn't seem to be a ton. Let's just read them. Kind of, for a lack of a better word, appease, I guess. Which is not a good word to use, but...
Okay.
People are really wanting this, they don't feel like their voice is being heard. They feel like we're glancing over what they wrote, that their points aren't hitting home. And then, yeah, that comes back again to if we're able to see them, they can really hit their points home.
Okay.
Yeah, I would also, if there's a way to allow people to even have pre-recorded video messages as well to be submitted, I think that would, you know, really kind of get them the opportunity to feel heard when they're, they're the ones speaking. As if they couldn't get to the meeting in time at 6 o'clock, you know. But definitely feel like if it's, they, however they can articulate that, it's probably going to be better than Ron summarizing, you know, to what he thinks is the gist of it, you know. And it doesn't really feel like the people are speaking.
All right. And I, I think those are things for the future. Right now on the table, we have, because we, we invite people to write to us through the comments, public comments. And we've tried to summarize them. We all get them, as we know, and they're part of the record. But what I hear is three suggesting that we go ahead and read them, you know, at this time and then try to figure out another way, at least until we're all in the chamber, is that? You know, and then invite back into the chamber. Ron, why don't you go ahead, if you would, read, read these. I, I would keep in mind, not, not remembering some of them, but, you know, the, what is it? Three minutes, public comment time? So if they're lengthy...
I'm going to then ask Tony to, I don't think any of these are going to go beyond three minutes, but if I get there, Tony hits the buzzer. Leon Woodrow wrote pertaining to the 24-hour rule. Where is the science? Better safe than sorry. Who will be sorry? Those who you impact economically. Doug Pullen wrote, good morning, Mr. Chandler. I sent you an email yesterday to be read at the public comment time of the meeting, but it never got read or you didn't receive it. So here's my idea. First off, I was out of town during the evacuation, but I did receive the message for Zone 2 where I live, over 450 miles away in Clayellum, Washington. So it does really work. My idea is to buy updated tsunami sirens with both voice and siren capabilities with backup, with battery backup if we have no power. And place every 12 blocks covering all seven miles of town. Place one to two blocks up from the beach and also along West Devils Lake Road and Otis also. You can't hear the D River one if you're 15 blocks away. I have heard this system used in Carnation, Washington on 2000, on 2000, clear as a bell, two miles away. Can you send me a note that you received this? And also if Mayor Anderson got one, thank you, Doug Pullen. This one comes from Leslie Green. I want to add my voice to those who are disappointed by the lack of communication from Lincoln City during the Echo Mountain fire complex emergency. We were out of town and felt helpless as we attempted to learn how at-risk our home and other properties were. The city played zero part in helping inform us. It seems to me that Lincoln City was derelict in its duties to its citizens and failed to follow its own emergency plan. This needs to be fixed. It is unfortunately likely we will have future events where the highways are shut off and people need information. How will you do better? How will you inform your constituents? As a final note, I believe you, it would be in your best interest to do some outreach. The disappointment seems to be very widespread. This is from Carol Rolfing. In regards to the recent wildfire emergency evacuation, it has suggested that Lincoln City, Lincoln City's city manager or emergency manager contact all local AM and FM broadcast stations and request that they broadcast emergency information to keep the public informed. In this case, many people were in their automobiles, trapped in traffic, and in many cases had no ability to receive information except by their car radios. Some of the cell service providers were down or operating only intermittently. If cell service is out, there is no other form of communication except AM and FM broadcast radio. This, next one is from Linda Livingston. My adult son and I live on, and that's redacted, in Neatso. The morning on September 9th, my son's friend who lived, friends who lived in Otis, stopped at our house and told us that we needed to evacuate as the Echo Mountain fire had traveled south and was burning close to our neighborhood. I had noticed a Lincoln City police car driving by my house with only flashing lights activated, but I didn't hear any announcements over his speaker to evacuate and no sirens. My landline phone rang, but I wasn't able to get it in time to answer. Unfortunately, no messages were left on my answering machine as the windstorm and power outage disabled Centraltel. My son and I evacuated south to, onto Highway 101 into the worst traffic jam of my life. It was widely known that Lincoln City's traffic is bad, but due to decisions, decisions to shut down East Devils Lake Road during Labor Day weekend and wildfire season, this exponentially worsened traffic on Highway 101. The influx of tourists during the final throes of summer and their combined evacuation led to our three-hour journey to a friend's house in Depot Bay. I received my Lincoln Alerts text messages one hour into my three-hour evacuation. I have a few suggestions on how to improve the alerting and evacuation procedures. Police should ensure that they make enough noise when evacuating neighborhoods in order to get attention to the go-now message. Lincoln Alerts should get text and alerts to level-one evacuations and changes of evacuation sites much earlier. Evacuate motels in zones and not at all at once. Those closer to the ocean were significantly less dan, in significantly less danger than those located next to the woodlands. Future out road closures should factor in major holidays, drought conditions, and wildfire dangers prior to scheduling complete closures. Maybe investigation into a bypass road where Lincoln City should be considered to contend with the congestion issue. Lincoln City needs a one-way traffic emergency evacuation plan. Let's conduct more emergency preparedness educational seminars this fall and make available brochures and flyers for the public. I'm grateful to the firefighters and first responders for literally saving the Neatso neighborhood from devastation. My son's friends weren't as lucky as they lost their Otis home and all its contents in the fire. Thank you to the city council for requesting emergency preparedness feedback and our suggestions on how to improve evacuations and emergency alerts. I'll gladly serve on any future emergency preparedness committee and donate any time to improvement. The following came from Wes Rumlich. Just a brief note to express that, the, to express the total lack of any communication from the city of Lincoln City during our recent fire event. You and the city council should be ashamed of the total lack of any information that was made available to the citizens of Lincoln City during the recent fire event. There should be no excuse for the lack of available communication with the citizens of Lincoln City. There should definitely be a means to communicate with all citizens during an emergency. There were so many rumors floating around, it was hard to know what was factual. Calls to LCPD were worthless. And since Rhodes End was Level 3 evacuation, you would think that LCPD would take some kind of responsibility to ensure that area was secure. They did not. Hope the recent event was a learning lesson for all in that it is only a matter of time until another emergency occurs. That's it.
Great. Thank you very much. All right. We have, next agenda item is a public hearing. And this is annexation 2020-01 CPA/ZZC 2020-02 Woods Annexation and Development Agreement. And I'll open the public hearing. It is now 7:32. The public hearing profiles Annex 2020-01 and CPA/ZZC 2020-02 Woods Annexation, together with the Statutory Development Agreement pursuant to LCMC 17.96, is now open. The council must take a few moments to cover some preliminary matters and required statements. Does any member of the council wish to declare an ex parte contact, communication, conflict of interest or bias in this matter? Oh, Counselor Hinton?
Yeah, I don't have a bias. I just want to acknowledge what I had said before, which was, which has been rectified, by the way. But that the acting planning director was also the consultant working and on behalf of the owners. And I thought that wasn't a good idea. And I voiced my opinion. I checked with the League of Oregon City Attorney and was told that my, my thinking was just fine and right up the, you know, I was asking all the right questions. I spoke with the city manager, Ron Chandler. And after that, there was, I believe the city hired a consultant to review all the paperwork. And, and so we see those changes, or the corrections or changes that we see in our packet regarding this Woods Annexation and Development Project are of the consultants. So I just wanted to, wanted to mention that.
All right, thank you. Anybody else got any kind of a declaration? Counselor Hinton again?
Oh, sorry, I was...
Okay, got you. Hearing none, then. Does any member of the audience wish to challenge the qualifications of the counselor to participate in this matter?
No.
Nobody, okay, nobody on the screen?
No, but we do have, we do have somebody for public comment when you're ready.
Not yet. Okay. Does any member of the audience wish to challenge the jurisdiction of the council to consider this matter? Seeing hearing none, okay. The following statements are required to be made at the commencement of the hearing pursuant to City Code NORS 197.7635. Staff shall now read a list of applicable substantive criteria for this decision. Richard Townsend?
I believe you could have Ann Marie do it.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay. Ann Marie, can you read the substantive criteria?
Yes, the substantive criteria are basically simple. It's compliance with Title 17, specifically the chapter devoted to statutory development agreements and compliance with the comprehensive plan.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
Could we please ask Ann Marie to identify herself and how she is speaking, either on behalf of the city or the client? I'm, it could be confusing.
Yes. My name is Ann Marie Skinner. I work with PBS Engineering. And the city hired me as a consultant to do review of the development agreement.
Okay, thank you.
Your Honor, that, just in addition to what Ann Marie mentioned, we do have the, in addition to the municipal code, we also have statewide planning goals and the Oregon Vice Statutes concerning annexation.
Okay. Okay, so all testimony, arguments and evidence must be directed towards the applicable substantive criteria previously listed or such other criteria in the plan or land use regulations, which the person believes applies to the decision. Failure to raise an issue accompanied by statements or evidence sufficient to afford the decision-maker and the parties an opportunity to respond to the issue precludes appeal to the LUBA, the Land Use Board of Appeals, on that issue. Failure of the applicant to raise constitutional or other issues related to proposed conditions of approval with sufficient sufficiency to allow the decision-maker to respond to the issue precludes any action or damages in Circuit Court. Prior to the end of this hearing, any person who participated may request a continuance to provide additional testimony, argument or evidence, or request that the record be left open to submit additional written testimony, argument or evidence. Before the staff presents a report, I would like to summarize the public hearing procedures, which have been adopted by the city council. Generally, the order of proceedings will be as follows. Preliminary matters and required statements. Staff report, questions of staff, applicant's presentation, those in favor of the application, those opposed, rebuttal of applicant, requests of continuance or to leave the record open, close of the hearing, close of the record, request to submit written argument deliberations and decisions. The city has established a time limit. The applicant will have 15 minutes and may reserve up to five minutes of that time for rebuttal. After the applicant testifies, any person may speak for up to three minutes. If the city council has questions, your time responding to any question will not be counted in your time limit. If you wish to speak, please write your name or mailing address clearly on the sign-up list at the entrance. Please speak directly into the microphone and begin by stating your name. If you also have written testimony to submit to the record, please provide a copy of that to the reporter. Please staff, submit the staff report.
Am I up?
You're up.
Okay. Referring to the staff report that was prepared on June 8th, 2020... Um, referring to the staff report that was prepared on June 8th, 2020, and that was prepared, uh, by me actually in my, uh, former role as Director of, uh, the Planning Department for the city of Lincoln City. Uh, the property owner is Woods One LLC. The site in question is unaddressed. It is located on the east side of Northwest Logan Road, approximately 370 feet south of the east-west stretch of Northeast Port Lane. It is, uh, comprises two tax lots, uh, Tax Lot 2400 and Tax Lot 2900, and those total together approximately 11.15 acres. Currently, the subject property is, uh, in Lincoln County. It has Lincoln County's residential comprehensive plan designation, and it has Lincoln County's R1A zoning district. The applicant proposes annexation of the, of both tax lots into the city of Lincoln City with a comprehensive plan map change from Lincoln County to Lincoln City's single-family residential district, and a zoning map change from Lincoln County's residential R1A zone to Lincoln City's single-family residential R15 zone. The, uh, surrounding land uses and zones are as follows. Uh, to the northwest of the site, single-family residences, and northeast of the site is a city water tower. Uh, that zoning designation is R1RE. South of the site, uh, southwest is a hotel, and southeast is undeveloped tribal land that has a zoning designation of RC, which is recreation commercial. To the east of the site are single-family residences with a zoning district of R17.5. West of the site is Northwest Logan Road, and then west of the road, uh, contains single-family residences in the zoning district R1RE. Uh, the Planning Commission heard this project back in February, and Planning Commission recommended approval of the annexation, and they recommended denial of the Comprehensive Plan Map Amendment and Zone Change. Uh, the staff report gives an analysis of the Comprehensive Plan and the statewide planning goals. Uh, most of them, I'm not going to go through all of them because that would be a lot to go through. Uh, most of them are met on the face of, on the face of the annexation and comprehen, and Zone Change application. Uh, the Statutory Development Agreement came in after the original application and after the Planning Commission hearing. So there is a separate, uh, report that has been prepared analyzing the Statutory Development Agreement, and that is in your packet. Starts roughly on packet page 103, and I'm going to specifically go through some of those items because those are key to tonight's, uh, hearing. The chapter in the Lincoln City Municipal Code that refers to statutory development agreements is Chapter 17.96. This project is applicable to a statutory development agreement if the applicant so At the time that, uh, this report was prepared, the city was unable to give me any, um, proof that the fees, um, the applicable fees for the statutory development agreement had been submitted. So the, that first portion of 17.96.040A, um, is not, is not met. That's easily remedied by payment of the fees, and perhaps those have been paid, and, uh, that evidence was just not provided to me. 17.96.040C, uh, refers to project components which define and detail permitted uses, residential densities, non-residential densities, and intensities, and building sizes. Not much of that was outlined in the Statutory Development Agreement. Uh, the requested zone of R15 permits both detached and attached single-family dwellings as outright allowed uses. Uh, the Development Agreement provides for permitted uses on the site as uses permitted under the city's R15 zone. Uh, this report recommends changing that statement to read permitted accessory and conditional uses listed in the city's R15 zone to provide clarity that the intent of the Development Agreement is not just to allow permitted uses, but also to allow accessory and conditional uses. If that is not the intent, and the intent is only to allow permitted uses, then that needs to be stated as such. Uh, as written, it is ambiguous and leads one to believe that the project will only provide for permitted uses and will not allow accessory or conditional uses. The Development Agreement also states that the maximum building height will be as determined through future approvals, which does not meet the content requirement for Chapter 17.96. The Development Agreement also states that the lot size and deter, and dimensions will be determined through future approvals, which also does not meet the content requirement. One of the purposes of the, of the Development Agreement is to provide the specific details of the project so that the city has those assurances of the ultimate outcome without having to negotiate in future approvals. In other words, the Development Agreement is the negotiation, um, and that saves city staff and the applicant from future negotiations in future approvals. So by omitting some of these items, such as the maximum building height and the lot and size dimensions, and leaving it to future approvals, that defeats the purpose of the Development Agreement. Therefore, it is recommended that the Development Agreement state the specific maximum building height, minimum lot size and dimensions, minimum setback, and maximum building coverage requirements, rather than leaving those determinations to future approvals. With those changes, uh, then this report writer, uh, would find that the content requirements for 17.96.040C, uh, would be met. One of the requirements of the Development Agreement is that proposed dedications of amenities, buildings, land, common areas, proposed parks and open space land preservation or dedication, uh, be spelled out. This proposed Development Agreement does not include any proposed dedications of amenities, buildings, land, common areas, or parks or open space. Therefore, this content requirement is not met. It is recommended that at a minimum, the Development Agreement include public right-of-way dedications of the site's Northwest Logan Road frontage and the internal public road system that will be constructed as part of the project. It is also recommended that any delineated jurisdictional wetlands be preserved as a common area open space tract to be owned and maintained by the homeowners association. And this report writer finds that with those recommended changes, that this particular content requirement, uh, can be met. Mitigation measures, development conditions, and other requirements of ORS Chapter 994. Uh, the Development Agreement does not reference any mitigation measures, development conditions, or other requirements, other than general references to adhering to all city codes and standards. Therefore, this re, content requirement is not met. Typically, traffic impact analyses will include traffic mitigation measures, and it is recommended, therefore, that for this content requirement to be satisfied, that the Statutory Development Agreement include a requirement for the project to comply with all traffic mitigation measures identified in the required traffic impact analysis for the project. Content requirement, uh, number six is any proposals to meet workforce or affordable housing needs. In this particular case, the Development Agreement does state that 10% of all residential units will be offered for sale or rent to people earning 120% of AMI or less. Uh, for clarification, it is recommended that AMI be spelled out. Uh, this report assumes that AMI stands for area median income, but that is not specified in the Development Agreement. So, the report writer recommends specifying what AMI is and a definition. And, also, in addition, that the 10% workforce housing stipulation is in perpetuity, or at least that there is some timeframe for that. Uh, right now, it just says, um, 10%, and it doesn't say how long that should last. Content requirement number seven has to do with phasing and timing. Exhibit C of the Development Agreement lists a proposed timetable of the development. However, the, the, the draft Development Agreement, um, does not list proposed phasing, nor does it provide a date for final completion of construction of all residential units. So, this report gives a recommendation that a statement be added to the, to the agreement that the project will be completed in one phase, and, and the addition of the number of years. For example, the construction of all dwelling units must be completed no later than five years from the date the final plan is recorded. And allow for final completion of construction of all dwelling units, then this content requirement will be met. Content requirement number eight is met. Content requirement number nine refers to any other appropriate condition or proposed terms. Uh, this agreement does not provide any specific development conditions or proposed terms, other than references to future approvals and complying with city code requirements. Again, for clarity, it is recommended that the agreement adds specific conditions and terms pertinent to the project, and with the addition of the recommendations contained in this report, as well as the addition of any other conditions or terms negotiated by the owner and the city prior to the adoption of the agreement, then that will serve to meet this content requirement. Content requirement number 10, uh, is met. Content requirement number 11 refers to, uh, dedication of land needed for infrastructure. Uh, Section 10 of the agreement is the provision for the reservation, dedication, or donation of the sale of land for public purposes. And in this section, the draft Development Agreement states that this information is intentionally omitted to be determined through future approvals. Therefore, this requirement is not met, since the code states the requirement for dedications of land or offers to construct needed infrastructure shall be clearly identified, and the agreement does not clearly identify, um, any dedications of land. So to meet this requirement, it is recommended that at a minimum, the requirement be to dedicate public right-of-way for the site's Northwest Logan Road frontage and the proposed internal road system. Additionally, the city owns the water reserve tank to the north of the site. There is a need for an emergency overflow easement on the site, and as part of meeting the content requirement for number 11, in addition to adding public right-of-way dedication for the streets, it is also recommended to add the requirement of granting to the city a public utility easement for purposes of emergency overflow, uh, for the adjacent tank. And with those additions, then content requirement number 11 will be met. Uh, content requirement number 12 is met. In referring to the item D in Chapter 17.96, which, uh, refers to the associated annexation application, uh, the Development Agreement is, provides a vehicle for an applicant to contractually commit to meet public needs. And again, I refer to, uh, the affordable and workforce housing, in that the agreement does provide, um, does provide a mechanism for requiring 10% of residential units, um, for people making 120% or less AMI. But again, the AMI is not defined or identified, so just, just another place in Chapter 17.96 that brings us back to the fact that the AMI needs to be clearly identified, uh, with a timeframe. And then that takes us to the Comprehensive Plan. Essentially, um, Goal 1 and 2 are satisfied. Uh, Goal 3, which is the Public Services and Utilities Goal, will be satisfied with the addition of provisions being made for public utilities easement. Uh, Goals 4 and 5 are satisfied. Goal 6, which is the housing goal, again, will be satisfied, uh, for the third time with, uh, a clear, clear delineation and identification of what AMI is and a timeframe for that. Uh, Goals 7, 8, 9, and 10 are satisfied. Goal 11 is the overall environmental goal, and, uh, for that one to be satisfied, this report recommends, again, just the, uh, preservation of the jurisdictional wetland as a tract, with additional language that all invasive and non-organ native vegetation be removed and be replaced with organ native vegetation appropriate for the location. And Goal 12, uh, is not really applicable. So, with those changes, uh, this report writer determines that the Statutory Development Agreement, uh, meets, would, would, will meet the requirements of the code and the Comprehensive Plan and the statewide planning goals.
Boy, thank you, quite lengthy, quite thorough. Thank you very much. Um, this is where, um, council would have questions of staff? But honestly, I, I don't know where to begin. Counselor Hinton?
Why not me, huh?
Go ahead.
Yeah, um, I just have a, have a few things. Um, one is just, was, you know, I was looking at the different zoning, um, Ann Marie, you're making me dizzy.
I know. My phone, my phone was dying, so I had to go get the charger.
Okay. Um, I was looking at the zoning and, and what I keep coming back to is the R175, because it's, uh, this property abuts to that, that, that neighborhood there has- it's, this property abuts to that, that neighborhood there has, is, well, I don't know, pretty settled and everything is cohesive, I guess is, I'm not sure of the right terminology here. But so the R15 and R1RE just, I don't know, it just doesn't seem to fit there. But the 75 makes a lot more sense. Was there any communication or discussion with the owners about that zoning opportunity? It would reduce...
Counselor, I believe that what's been noticed is a rezoning to R15, not, not any other option. So I guess if staff had had that discussion of, hey, these are the available zoning districts, do you want to give notice of, you know, R110 and R75 and R15? We could have noticed all three, but we only noticed R15 is my understanding.
Okay, that's, that's what it says. I just need some history here in trying to understand this project. And when it's, abuts right next to R175, I have the question, why aren't we discussing that zoning? Because that actually makes more sense considering the traffic pick, and, you know, we don't even have to talk about the evacuation that took from two to three hours according to reports. So, and that's just one event, but then we can talk about other traffic situations. I'm just trying to...
I will remind you that with the addition of the development agreement, they can use the development agreement to limit the total number of units, regardless of which zone we're talking about.
Okay, but then...
I was just going to suggest the same thing. Because they did apply for the R15 zone, and that is what has been noticed. And in answer to your question, Counselor Hinton, I honestly do not recall, I honestly do not recall during the pre-application conference if there was any discussion between R15 versus R175. I, I just, I don't remember. The R15, the R175, and the R1RE are all in the same comprehensive plan designation of R5.
Okay.
So they're all compliant with the comprehensive plan designation. So there's not, meaning that there's not anything in the comprehensive plan goals that staff would be able to say, no, you have to have R175 over R15, because it meets the comprehensive plan designation of R5, which are, which is the same for all three of those zones. But what the council can do is they, they could suggest something like what Mr. Appicello just suggested. They could limit the number of units. Right now, they have 80, so they could limit it to a different number. Or they could, they could make the outer, all the outer lots that are abutting R1RE, R1, yeah, R1RE and R175 with a minimum lot size of 7,500 square feet. And then the inner lots would be a minimum lot size of 5,000 square feet. So there are some different options that council could explore in the development agreement, which goes back to my specifying that, right now, the draft development agreement just says to be determined in future approvals. And now is the time to get that nailed down. So if council does want to have some of those things, they could proceed forward with the R15 zone, but put in some parameters and, excuse me, specifications for the lot sizes and the number of lots.
Okay. And the same about the heights. I mean, there are no, to my knowledge, there are no houses in that whole entire area, R175 or R1RE that are of that 35-foot height. So that's the same question.
Same, same thing. There again, you could make the maximum height for this development at 30 feet, and you could do that as part of the development agreement.
Okay. Okay, and then I just have another question is, who is, from this evening on, who is representing the property owners in all of this?
That I don't have an answer to.
We're in a sticky wicket right here, so I just want to make, be real clear about this.
Yeah, they are represented by legal counsel. Steve Holtberg is on, on your screen.
He's not the planner person, though.
Yeah, he's the attorney.
Well, you're an attorney, but you don't do plan designs and, come on, Richard.
Well, I'm not sure what you're getting at, Counselor Hinton, because the, what we may end up doing is probably sending the development agreement back for further negotiation and completion to answer some of your, your questions. So you're, you're right.
But who's doing that, is my question.
Well, the legal counsel will take it back to their team, the Wood Incorporated LLC, and they'll negotiate with the city, the development agreement.
In all probability, legal counsel for developer will talk to legal counsel for the city. I will not be talking directly to the Woods, Woodses or their development team. I will be talking only to their legal counsel. The legal counsel will not be talking to staff or our consultant. Their legal counsel will be talking to me.
And Counselor Hinton, that's fairly typical. In, in negotiating development agreements, it usually takes place between the attorneys.
Okay.
So our, our role would be kind of making these suggestions that you're bringing up, Counselor Hinton, so there's nothing wrong with making this list. So did you have some others?
Yeah. At this point in the, in the script, we're just at the point where staff has completed their staff report, you're asking questions of staff about the staff report. We still have to hear from the applicant and obviously the public, there's even members of the public here.
Right. I just wanted to thank Anne Marie, she did a really good job of listing all these things out. I was making my own list, and they match up pretty carefully.
Counselor Holblin?
Hey, I was also wondering about if there, you know, it sounded like there were some, you know, inadequacies, and I appreciate Anne Marie, thank you for the report, it was wonderful. And just looking to see, you know, we haven't mentioned if they meet the criteria across the board in having an inner and outer, making these recommendations to the development agreement, but I don't, I haven't heard anything about the use of full-time BRD use. So has that been, been brought up at all about that, the need for that? If they're all the same, you know?
That has not been brought up. If the council would like that to be a point of negotiation, then please give that direction to staff, to me, and I will bring that forward and talk to the developer or his legal counsel concerning imposing special conditions. Just some history is that in the past, when we've done development agreement, it wasn't during a pandemic, so we had more conversations and, you know, more staff took conversations in addition to negotiations with the developer. But in the past, we've come to you with like a fully formed development agreement with a list of conditions, usually in the context of a planned development with much more detail. And so the conditions made more sense. In this case, we're kind of anticipating future approvals, which some conditions may apply, but we don't actually have those before us. So we have to be a little bit more careful. We don't have a site plan in front of us, but we can set parameters for future discretionary approvals. So if you would like a special condition that says, in this development, there will be no vacation rentals, or there won't be any more than X number of vacation rentals, I mean, we do have a cap in, in the city that's applicable to this district that we're talking about. So I'm sure they are aware of that. But, I mean, we can impose those kind of conditions or negotiate for those conditions in, in this regard.
Other questions? Counselor Hinton?
Yeah, I'm just, because we don't have all of that in front of us, and quite frankly, we didn't get one comment, I know we're not there yet, but we didn't get one comment in favor of this project. And my count was 22, plus an organization against it. And so I just, it was just, I guess, without knowing all those other detail, I mean, it just, it does, you know, I would have a hard time kind of figuring all this out without...
Yeah, Counselor Hinton, again, we're, we're not ready to make a decision, you know?
Oh, no.
Yeah, so your angst is certainly appropriate, because, and then we, like I said, we may have to, you know, send it back for more, more negotiation.
Yeah.
So any questions of staff from council? Specifics on the, the report, or we move into other testimony? Seeing none, then let's, okay, applicant's presentation. So, Kat Berden, this would be you, and you have, I guess, 15 minutes, but you can reserve five minutes for rebuttals if you so desired.
Great, thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor, and council, council members. My name is Steve Holtberg. I'm an attorney with Radler White-Parks and Alexander. My address is PO Box 2007, out in Bend, 97709. And I'm here with Steve Woods this evening. He'll be joining and speaking in just a few minutes. What I'd like to do is introduce the project a little bit, turn it over to Steve to discuss his goals for the project, and then get into some of the substantive issues that were addressed in the staff report. Before I get there, as Richard mentioned, typically in these situations, we show up to city council with a fully formed development agreement. In this case, we didn't get city comments until last Wednesday afternoon, and that's for a variety of reasons, which are very understandable, given the circumstances. But what that has resulted in is we've had very little ability to discuss any of these issues with staff. Richard and I were able to speak this afternoon just very briefly. I think in many instances, we are actually very close on the issues, but we really haven't had a chance to sit down with staff to discuss these issues. So it's a little, it's a little challenging for us to get a staff report on Wednesday and then try to react to it via email over a couple days. And so the reason that we have some discrepancies with staff are just because of the timing of this. And so we fully expect to come back with a more fully formed development agreement in front of the council, and I will certainly work with Richard on that. And Counselor Hinton, just to be, to be clear, I know you had concerns about former director and now, or, and now current director, Richard Townsend. He alerted me early on in this process that he was considering taking a position with the city. From really that point on, I have not had a substantive conversation with him about this project. He has been, to my knowledge, fully out of this, and I've had really no discussions, and he has not assisted us on this. I think your concerns are very valid, but I just wanted to assure you that he has not been assisting us, certainly while he has been the, the director at this point. In terms of process, just to get it out of the way, I do want to make the request to leave the record open. I'm not sure that we need to come back for a, another public hearing, but I do want to leave the written record open, which will allow us to work with staff to hopefully address these outstanding issues. At this point, Steve, I'm going to turn it over to you to discuss sort of the history and your goals for the project, and then I'll pick up on a few of the outstanding issues.
So as I understand it, this is the first step in a long and lengthy process. This is a statutory development agreement, which lays out the foundation. From what I understand, we'll come back later with a PUD and go through that approval process. But again, it's going to be a long process. Our desire right now is to build a three-phase project there. Part of the reason for building this project, it's in a great location. This property is surrounded by city property, and it, and it's this odd piece of county property that's surrounded by city. It's a fairly large piece of property. And this property is within walking distance of the shopping, it's walking distance to the casino and employment, it's walking distance to the beach. So it makes it kind of an ideal property. We feel that phase one is going to be eight separate buildings. These will be four-plex to the five-plex units along Logan Road. In those units, we will have eight or the 10% of the workforce housing that is so desirable. But our plan is to make that desirable, or make that available for a 10-year period. We've seen the notes about ten perpetuity, we'll, how do you enforce making something that way forever? You know, forever is a long time, and perpetuity is a very long time period. So we're suggesting that the 10 years. Phase two will be single-family units. They will go along the north side of the property. That's where the water tank is located. And then phase three will be the final phase, and that, that will be on the east side of the property. Because of its location, it's up on a ridge, those houses will potentially have some view of the ocean, but, but that would be the third phase. We plan to include a very large area down in the lower level. There is a, topographically, there's a very low spot in the middle of this property. So in that, we plan to build a, kind of a park-like setting, where people can take their children, where they can take their dogs. We've got, if you look at some of the drawings we've submitted, there are walking paths that go down to that area. We may even build some kind of a structure, probably open on the sides, but a covered structure, because we live in Oregon, and it rains here a lot. So we're wanting to put picnic tables down there, we may put in some kind of a, a built-in barbecue of some kind, but give people a very nice place to go to that live in this community. There will be, and again, if you look at the drawings, you can see where the roads will be, where the landscaping is. We've actually done a lot of prep work on this, there's many drawings supporting that. During that, we're going to have to remove all those invasive species that are there. We're going to have to remove all the stumps that were left there when the prior owners logged it. And not only stumps, but brush piles and things. Right now, when you drive by that property, it is an ugly piece of property, and everybody that goes to Rhodes End sees that ugly piece of property. We'd like to turn it into a beautiful development that people in Lincoln City would be proud of, that we ourselves would be proud of, the type of place that we'd like to live. If you're familiar with Olivia Beach, I know I've heard many good things about Olivia Beach and the development of that property. We're using the same architect, or he has at least expressed his desire to be involved in this project. You know, at this point, we haven't spent all the time to do a complete PUD development agreement, because we don't even know if it's going to be annexed into the city yet. So we need to get that step taken before we can spend the $100,000 plus to put a complete PUD together. But as I understood it, this statutory development agreement was the first piece of that, and it was more general in nature. And so when we get all finished, I'm... And so, when we get all finished, I'm hopeful that it becomes a very nice part of the city. I'm hopeful that many people want to live there, and that it's a desirable area to have a residence. So that's what our goals and our dreams and our ambitions are with this property. And with that, I'll turn it back over to Steve. And by the way, let's have no question about it, Steve Holtberg is now our attorney representing on this. It's not Richard Townsend anymore.
Great, thank you, Steve. One of the things that I want to touch on is the process and how we see this moving forward. It was, our understanding and our expectation is that this is really the first step in a pretty long and discretionary process with the city. Our plan is that the development agreement and the annexation gets the property into the city, and then we'll be filing shortly thereafter, an application for a planned unit development. And as you saw in your previous hearing and have seen in other instances, the PUD process is a highly discretionary process. And through that process, that's where we talk about building height and setbacks and other development standards. The way we have structured the development agreement right now is, we are subject to the base zone standards, the R15 zone. That is our plan. To the extent that those are modified through the PUD process, those will be the standards that apply. But understand that the city has a lot of discretion in approving those. And so, that's why intentionally, the development agreement doesn't have things like, what's the maximum building size? What's the maximum height? What is the setback? Where is the road going to go? How big's the park going to be? How much road do you need to dedicate? All those issues are critically important, and we understand the need for them. We think the details of that have to follow with, as Richard mentioned earlier, with the parameters of the overlying zone controlling it, and whatever conditions you decide to impose as part of the development agreement itself. But I think it's very important to understand that the lack of specificity in the development agreement is not intended to give the developer a lot of leeway. It is intentional to allow a future process to occur, that the city will be intimately involved with in reviewing. And so, that's why there aren't many things that you might anticipate being in a development agreement, in that agreement at this point. As I mentioned earlier, I think, you know, going through Ann Marie's report, I think we're pretty close on a lot of issues. A lot of it, to me, is providing some additional detail on AMI, for example. We didn't define it. We can easily define that term. A couple of things that I do want to point out, that I think are premature at this point. In particular, the dedications of right-of-way and internal streets. Those are issues, we certainly understand that if the city's street standards require dedication for additional sidewalks and parking, that's going to happen, and that's going to happen as part of the PUD process. But we can't, at this point, say, okay, we'll give the city 60 feet of right-of-way, or an additional 10 feet of right-of-way, especially when we don't know if the city's going to approve a PUD. It makes really no sense for anyone to dedicate property with the uncertainty moving ahead of whether the city's actually going to approve a development on the project. And the same goes with the water tower. We had a preliminary discussion with staff, oh, probably two and a half, three months ago, about the water tower and the need for an easement. We certainly understand the city's need, and are willing to discuss accommodating that need. But it's, at this point, premature to say, dedicate an easement and put it in this location, because we don't know how that's going to work. We don't know how the city plans to get rid of water in an emergency for overflow. So, while we're more than happy to discuss those issues with staff, we think that we can condition the development agreement to say, resolve that issue, that's going to be a part of your PUD application. But at this point, we just don't have any clarity on what the city needs in that instance. The same goes with dedication of open space. As Steve mentioned, the project's going to have considerable open space. I think you've seen in your packets some preliminary designs for the project. A lot of it is open space. Those areas will be protected, they'll be maintained as common areas and/or open space. I would note that, I just checked the wetland mapper today, there are no mapped wetlands on the property. Certainly, when we go through the development process, we'll have to do a wetland delineation to make sure that there are, in fact, no wetlands, and if there are, that they need to be protected or dealt with as permitted by law. But, again, at this point, it's difficult for us to say, here, here's four acres that we know won't be touched, because we don't know that at this point. But I think we can get around those issues through proper conditioning of the development agreement, and more importantly, the city's review of the planned development application that's going to, that will follow this application. Two issues that I think are worth discussing is the workforce housing. As Steve mentioned earlier, the project is willing to and wants to take on a workforce housing component of that. But, requiring homes to be maintained for affordable housing in perpetuity goes well beyond any reasonable condition that I think the city can impose. Even if you take a look at affordable housing programs, federal tax credits, things like that, the affordability periods are far less, and none of which, that I'm aware, require a obligation to maintain something in perpetuity for workforce housing. I just don't see how the city can impose that type of restriction on a piece of property to maintain that in perpetuity. Again, it's something that we are more than happy to discuss with the city, and it will be a component of this development agreement. But I wanted to highlight that issue to you, because I think a perpetuity requirement is simply unreasonable and can't be justified under the city's standards. The second, again, relates to the right-of-way, which I've discussed. Again, we're more than happy to dedicate whatever right-of-way is required under the code and under the transportation system plan, but at this point, we don't know if it's going to be 10 feet or 15 feet, or exactly where that's going to be. The same goes with internal access roads. We have an idea where they're going to go, but we just don't know for certain at this point. Just going through my nose to relate to some of Ann Marie's questions. Transportation impact study, the same thing. We have an idea, we've seen prior studies for the property and for the project, we understand what the traffic might be, but as part of a development agreement where there is not an actual proposal, it's, I think, not appropriate to say, do a transportation study, and then fix whatever the transportation study says. Because that's an unknown at this point, that I can't advise my client to say, yes, buy off on any mitigation that's shown up in a traffic impact study. Again, the transportation planning rule, city standards, all require mitigation, and we understand that. And if mitigation is required, and it's triggered by this development, we understand that's going to be an obligation of the applicant, and that will be part of the PUD process. But at this point, we can't agree just to fix anything that shows up in a transportation study. That's just a very expensive unknown, that I would not recommend anyone agree to at this point. I don't know where we are on time. I sense we're probably running towards the end. But with that, I just wanted to reiterate, A, that we're happy to answer any questions that you might have about the project, or about the development agreement, but also to suggest that the record be left open for a period of time, and I'll leave it to Richard as well, to see what his schedule and other staff schedules are like. I think, frankly, it's stuff that we could resolve in an afternoon, if we could sit down together. I just don't know how practical that is. So, I would like to hear Richard's thoughts on keeping the record open for what period of time. And with that, unless there are any questions, I'm going to end our testimony at this point.
Okay. Well, let me see if council has any questions. You know, if I could, and I appreciated your conversation on workforce housing and the 10%, and, you know, forever is a long time. One of the concerns or thoughts I'm wondering about is, I'm assuming you're going to, this Phase One are rental units, then? And that's where you're looking at probably housing the workforce area?
Yes, Steve, you might want to answer that.
I believe that some of those units will be available or priced, so that workforce type person could afford to buy them. We talked about and calculated what kind of a price range you would have to have, and the number we came up with was around 260,000 to 265,000. That was based on current interest rates, which back then were actually a little higher, but in that kind of a price range. And I anticipate that some of those units, people would say, I don't want to rent, I want to buy a place. Now, and the other units, I think that they would be rental units.
So, I guess what I hear you saying is it's a mixed bag, maybe some condos, it could be either rental or ownership. And I, you know, and that's fine. All I'm concerned about, and will be always addressing, is that they aren't the smallest units on the block. I understand that, you know, how you might build to affordable lower level, you know, it's either smaller in size, cheaper in quality, that kind of stuff. You know, we have a need and would lean towards, you know, the two- and three-bedroom kind of units that are needed. So I'd just keep that in mind, if you would. You know, when we're talking about a smaller percentage, then you certainly would like more than a one-bedroom unit.
Well, and I don't anticipate that those are going to be basement units. I would anticipate that they're going to look much like the other units. But where one unit may have granite countertops, hardwood floors, et cetera, the other unit may not, may have Formica.
Right. No, I, yeah. I just, you know, the tendency is always to have the studio apartment be the affordable, and that's not what we'd be leaning towards. Just a forewarning. Councilor Mark?
Thank you, Mayor. So, the big question I have is about, is about traffic, which of course is the huge concern for all your neighbors who live to the north. I see on the map that there's a proposed Portobello Lane that would route to Port, Northeast Port, around the reservoir, and that would be a way to get people over to the Voyage area. I'm wondering about the Annabella Lane that's pictured on the map that points south. Is the idea that that would dead-end there? Is there a potential? If somebody else staff maybe could help me. I know there's a plan to connect 44th to 47th. I don't know how far away that is from reality, but I'm wondering if the Annabella Lane could connect down to there. And then, let me ask my other question, too. If, if you think the idea of keeping 10% of the housing at a workforce level is practical, is doable for, say, 10 years, I'm wondering what the mechanism is for ensuring that those properties are kept at that level? So somebody buys, buys a house at a workforce housing level, and three years, five years later, they want to sell, and the, you know, the market now is at a point where that house could sell for much higher than a workforce level? How do you ensure that it stays where we want it? So those are my two concerns.
That's a great question. And there are programs, but I mean, through the rental, it's obviously a lot easier to control that. But there are programs, you can use deed restrictions, restrictive covenants, affordability covenants, things like that, that will bind the property. You know, we have not looked into every detail of that, but there are ways that you can maintain that. Because the last thing anyone wants is a project to be designed to be affordable, it's sold, and then flipped for a profit. That's certainly not the intent. So there are ways that you can control that. And we would certainly, as a part of any approval, would require that as a condition.
And then, if that's, and that makes sense to me, and it's actually what I was expecting to hear. So why, why limit it to 10 years? Why, what would be the problem with not extending that longer?
Well, it's, I mean, it's frankly, and these are my words, Steve can jump in as well, but it's a matter of returns as well. Burdening one property owner with the obligation to provide workforce housing when that's not put on other properties, other owners in the city, I'm not sure of the equity of that. And so, there has to be a period of time that is a reasonable period of time. We are suggesting 10 years is an appropriate period of time. The city feels differently, that is a point of negotiation. But our initial reaction to perpetuity was that it was just not a reasonable request.
Okay. All right. Councilor Hinton, I saw your hand up.
Yeah, I would just have a similar question to Councilor Mark, and that's just traffic. I know neither the owners nor the attorney for the owners live in the area, so you might not be familiar with this, but there are a significant number of vacation rentals further north of your property, and about 11 o'clock on Sunday, especially in the summer and over holidays and on weekends, there's a tremendous amount of traffic. I mean, it backs all the way up past your property even, to the north. And so, and then there's the traffic from the casino, which is, you know, across from your property, and, and there's also the traffic coming from Port, from the Voyage area and the Palisades. There's a lot of people who live, who live on the other side of your property, and like I say, you're probably not familiar with, with the vicinity, but there's a, there's a lot of houses over there, and they come, they come west and to get onto Logan, perhaps to take a shortcut to get to other parts of town, but in particular, to get to Safeway. And so, on some occasions, it's difficult even to get out of the Safeway parking lot and turn north. And so, those are the concerns that I've heard, in addition to our, our recent wildfire not too far from here, when that area of town was evacuated. It literally took two to three hours to get out, and that's not a very long stretch. And so, there's real concern about the number of cars, and so that goes back to the traffic analysis, and, and how important that is to the community. And it's not just something to have you do, it's actually life-saving for a lot of folks. I just, I'm ignoring my phone. But, that's, that's, I would say, the most important comment that I hear shouting from the rooftops, is the traffic. So it's not just a consideration, it's of utmost importance, more so than, you know, the number of houses, but I'm concerned about that. But, so, take that to heart.
Certainly will.
Mr. Appitelli, you had a question?
Just, I realize, we still have to hear from the people in the audience, but in terms of leaving the record open, my suggestion would be to leave it open until the agenda deadline for the October 26 meeting, which would be October 21, say 5:00. And then, we could continue this matter to the, or leave the record open, and then deliberations would occur on the 26th. That would give both sides approximately 10 days or so to put together some conditions, and see, he'll throw some conditions at legal counsel, and he'll throw stuff back at us. I'd need time to meet with engineer and the planner involved. But again, I'm jumping the gun, I just wanted to get some dates out there, so that we can move this along. But I know you have to take public comment now.
Any other councilor have some questions? Any other councilor have some questions of the applicant? All right. Seeing none, why don't we bring up applicants, or, this would be the testimony to support of the application. Tony, are there anyone in the, in the chamber with support for the project?
I have somebody who's neutral.
Okay, we'll take neutral.
Okay.
Hi.
My name is Laura Quillman. I wasn't really prepared to speak on this topic. I was here for the earlier issue regarding the Cove Phase 3. But I feel that it's extremely important that staff, the planning commission, or the council look carefully and require all new residential developments to have street widths that accommodate parking on the street for 80 units in this case, and meet all Oregon fire codes. Now, I, so that's my comment about this upcoming project. Sounds very nice, and I have no concerns over it. But I will, would like to make a formal complaint about my public comment submitted appropriately that was summarized by the city attorney without including my comments, incorrectly stating that I misinterpreted the fire marshal's input. I did not, and no one on the council has addressed no parking in the previously approved subdivision, so you must look at that before you go forward with new ones. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. All right. Anybody, I'm assuming, Mr. Chandler, you haven't gotten anything through the electronic?
I do. It's similar to the way Tony described it. I have a person that, one that has said not, not opposed to it, but does have some concerns.
So that's, if you could, you have something to read?
Yeah, I do.
Okay.
This came from Bruce Robinson. Friends, thank you all for a job well done during the fire. It was a great test to learn from in the case we ever suffer the big one. Communications predictably sucked in the hospital evacuation, threw a monkey wrench into everything, but the city didn't burn down and nobody died. Thank you for all, thank you all for that. In particular, thanks to Deanna and Mitch, our ward representatives, for keeping us evacuees informed on the state of our neighborhood during the emergency. The forest fire and evacuation was a test for us all, and Rhodes End was unprepared. The fire will happen again, maybe every year. It took two and a half hours to get the 300 of us out of there and consume the efforts of three patrol cars. The next fire might not give us that much time, and a tsunami won't for sure. I, I hope we prioritize emergency preparedness over new construction and keep in mind the load, the load this project adds to the Rhodes End egress. I like the project generally. The land is within our growth boundary, annexation seems inevitable. The project satisfies the need, the city's need for higher-density housing. The two exits from the neighborhood is mandatory. I believe the traffic circle at Logan and Port would be dangerous, and city council should demand a traffic analysis. It represents a major change to traffic flow, and the entire neighborhood should have been notified. We weren't. Please keep an eye on the form factor. The windward project between the DMV and the golf course on West Devils Lake is similar to woods. The inside is nice, but its street-side form factor is very unsightly. Eventually, the trees will grow up, but as an entrance into the villages, one of our Pearls, Pearl Neighborhoods, not a good look. Compared to Jim Ransum's new development across from the old hospital, very tasteful, very appealing. This new woods development will be the entrance into Rhodes End, another pearl neighborhood of Lincoln City. Make it look again. Thanks again for what you do, Bruce.
Okay. Thank you very much. All right. Why don't we then have testimony in opposition to the application? Tony, do you have people in the chamber?
No, sorry, you're not.
Uh, no, no opposition?
No.
Oh, okay. Thank you. Mr. Chandler, do you have?
I do.
Okay.
Okay. The first comes from Sandra Shivers. Dear City Council, we all understand that as a representative body, for all of us in Lincoln City, you often have to balance the needs of the current and future residents against development. This is one of those cases. It involves the safety and health of hundreds of current and future residents. Please deny this request, or at least postpone it until the health and safety of the residents can be ensured. One, health of the community. The Rhodes End water and sewer system is aging and vulnerable to malfunction. A development of this size places significant additional stress on those systems and will negatively impact service to the neighborhood. This is a major health issue if people have sewer backup or loss of potable water. Evacuation. In addition to the recent attempts to evacuate Rhodes End related to the fire, we also need a way to evacuate even more quickly in the event of a tsunami. As we saw this month, it is already impossible to evacuate the area quickly because of the narrow and few main roads. Adding 80 new homes will make it impossible for many residents and visitors alike to exit the road, the area and be saved when an emergency occurs. Road 3, road safety. There's already a high, there's already a high volume of traffic on Logan Road. Traffic and pedestrian safety should be a top priority. Currently, there are no safe walking paths or sidewalk on Logan Road, and no speed bumps or traffic lights to limit traffic to a reasonable speed. There are a number of blind entry or sightline areas, both driveway and roads, into Logan Road, which adds to the issue. There are no marked crossings for cyclists or pedestrians. The road is too narrow for emergency vehicles to get past slower vehicles, even in trapped, even in light traffic. Adding 80 more houses adds 160 or more vehicles using Logan Road daily, plus bicycles and pedestrians, increasing danger to everyone using the road to get to the market and other activities. Four, beach parking, lack of shuttle service. Many of us live on the roads that lead to the beach. There's not enough parking available for current visitors and residents to, so on good-weather weekends, our driveways and streets are impacted by the number of cars parked near the beach. The woods development would add that much more to this issue, since it is more likely that these new residents will drive rather than walk, and there's no convenient bus or shuttle service. Five, city council process. I have not been able to find anything online to indicate that a development agreement has been discussed with Lincoln City, nor have I found any record of an open debate online discussing the concerns I've listed about above related to this specific development request. It is important that our council representatives, as well as the community, have an oppor, the opportunity to hear planning solutions for any development to address the infrastructure, safety, and travel, traffic issues caused by any development in our county and city before that development is considered. Best regards, Sandra Shivers resident. The next comes from Janet Knight. The Rhodes End Improvement Association, REIA, is opposed to both annexation and rezoning of the proposed woods development. We only need to point to the recent chaotic fire evacuation of Rhodes End to see that this project is completely inappropriate for this location. Two weeks ago, Rhodes End residents and visitors spent more than three hours in our car trying to evacuate via Logan Road to Highway 101. The addition of 80 new residential units in the neighborhood and the accompanying number of cars would compound the problem of a safe egress exponentially. The means of ingress and egress for those properties would be two from Logan Road. This is a public safety disaster in the making, especially when compounded by the large number of active BRDs, 20%, which will bring in large volume of cars and traffic. We are also deeply concerned about this project for additional reasons. One, it is inconsistent with the comprehensive plan goals number two and the statewide planning goal number one regarding citizen input. Residents have not been properly notified on what this project will entail. There has not been sufficient opportunity for public comment through a formal public hearing. At a minimum, there should be a well-publicized and noticed public hearing on a project of this size and importance. Two, there is no negotiated development agreement. We have not seen the details on this project to be able to properly evaluate its fitness for the neighborhood. According to the Lincoln City's own language statements by the owner regarding their intentions are not binding until there is such an agreement. So there is no guarantee that the developer would build the kind of housing Lincoln City needs most right now, affordable and workforce housing. The requested zoning change is inconsistent with the zones that border the 11.15 acres. It should be noted that in a recent survey, a majority of REIA's members stated that they were concerned about this project for the reasons stated herein. Three, it has an adverse impact on Rhodes End sewer and water systems. The Rhodes End Villages Urban Renewal Area Plan Advisory Committee has already discussed the fact that the infrastructure in the Rhodes End is aging and is quite vulnerable to malfunction. This sizable development places significant stress on those systems and will negatively impact service to the neighborhood. It negatively affects public safety, traffic, and pedestrian use. Now, that's number four. It negatively affects public safety, traffic, and pedestrian use. Driving at the corner of Logan and Road and Port Lane is already dangerous because of speeding cars and poor sightlines. Adding more cars would only exasperate the problem and further jeopardizes public safety. Since there is still no negotiated development agreement at this time, we believe it would be foolhardy and negligent to approve this project. Currently, there is also an entirely new and as yet undeveloped neighborhood, the villages at Sitka Woods, with plenty of lots ready for development. This project application seems untimely, incomplete, inappropriate, and short-sighted. We urge the city council to deny both parts of this application and to focus on projects, i.e., workforce and low-income housing, that will truly serve the entire community during these challenges, challenging times. Thank you for your consideration, Janet Knight, President, on behalf of the Rhodes End Improvement Association. This is from Louise Umberger. I have a beach home at Rhodes End and enjoy spending time there. There is enough traffic on Logan Road as it is, and the development would cause complete havoc to the area. Please think of all the homeowners and the hardships it would bring, it would bring, think of where you live and what, and what that would do to your neighborhood. Thank you, Louise Umberger. Next is from Margaret Harvey. I have been a homeowner in Rhodes End for over 20 years. Annexations in Lincoln City increase their property taxes with the understanding to maintain roads, sewer, and water. Allowing new development puts an even further strain on our old system, systems that need replacement in Rhodes End. The actual community has more and more rentals, more cars on a limited access road for emergency evacuation. Excuse me. The evacuation for eco-fire from Rhodes End, of which probably a majority were owners, not renters, mid-week took two hours to get to Highway 101. Until there is better infrastructure, emergency access, improvement to current sewer systems, and a detailed plan for the woods development, I do not support going forward with the development. Sincerely, Margaret Harvey. Next is from Dana Manning. I pay, I am opposed to the development of those 11.5 acres. I pay a fortune in property taxes for my three properties on Logan Road, and I want to see the culverts filled in, the power lines put underground. I do not want the increased traffic this will cause, as well, as well as taxing our current systems, not to mention more people parking to the access beach. No, thank you. Dana Manning. He further states, "I've already responded once, but wanted to add, I own a home in the beach on Logan Road with parking for at least eight cars. I didn't sign up in the time for it to be included in the allowed rental group. Don't really want to rent it, but it definitely will affect resale value. If I'm not allowed to have a rental greatly based on people abusing the rental requirements, why would I want 80 more homes to be built in our quaint Rhodes End community? No way. I'd like to see something better happen besides the eyesore of that acreage. But that's just, but that's just 160 to 240 minimum more people to educate about the rules, crowd the beaches, and become traffic noises, not to mention the increase in infrastructure updates that already are needed." Thank you, Dana Manning. This is from Jim Stovall. This project seems to be, have a zombie existence. After being defeated a few years ago, it's back again. I testified against it before for the previous applicant, and I oppose it even more strongly now, especially after the recent evacuation event in this area. I'm a full-time resident, or I'm a full-time Rhodes End resident, Jim Stovall. This is from James in Wanda Berry. We have read the letter sent to you by our neighbor, Maureen McFarlane, and strongly agree to what she has said. It would be a very, very bad thing for the whole area if this is approved. Traffic was just horrible during the fire. Also, the water and sewer system is inadequate for that many new places. Also, what about fire protection and police with that many new places? Thank you for listening. Jim and Sheri Berry, please do the right thing for the town and the neighborhood. This one is from Ken Murgentine. Dear members of the City Council for Lincoln City, I am a full-time resident of the Rhodes End community and am becoming increasingly concerned about a proposed housing plan for the undeveloped land near the corner of Logan Road and Port Lane, commonly referred to as the woods. I am strongly against placing a proposed 80 house, a proposed 80 houses on the land, as it would greatly increase the already difficult traffic issues in the area. We saw a great deal of confusion and chaos when Rhodes End was asked to evacuate due to the recent fires. That situation would have been immeasurable worse if you added another 100 or more cars to that process. In addition, I fail to see the practicality of the city paying for the infrastructure for a new neighborhood when there are so many undeveloped lots already in the nearby villages' neighborhood. The same thing will happen to the woods land should they plan, should the plan proceed. Let the builders develop the villages' lots first. Please reconsider this proposal. It is a bad idea for Lincoln City and a bad idea for the Rhodes End community. Ken Murgentine. This letter is from Ernie Rose. Greetings. I recently learned about your proposed development of a new residential unit on the woods 11.15 acre parcel. Below are my thoughts and concerns about the negative effect of the development. With regards to the proposed woods development at the corner of Port Lane and Logan Road, I wish to express my concern for this development, which would add 80 new residential units on the 11.15 acre parcel. After witnessing the gridlocked emergency evacuation from Rhodes End due to the Echo Mountain Complex wildfires, adding an additional 80-plus cars trying to get out to Highway 101 could pose increased danger to those seeking to put distance between themselves and a dangerous environmental threat. As I understand, it took about two hours to travel from Logan Road north to Highway 101 during the wildfires. That in itself is ludicrous. Secondly, what kind of an effect is such a large development going to have on the current Rhodes End utilities? My guess is that it will strain our current services unless, of course, they are upgraded to accommodate the increased use. But to do so will require a huge expense, when the residents of Rhodes End would rather seek go towards, toward the safety of auto and pedestrian traffic along Logan Road, and especially at the dangerous curve at Port Lane and Logan Road. Finally, I would think the 11.15 acre woods parcel would be better served as a green-space park where folks could calmly and enjoyably partake in a natural setting, one that wouldn't take... one that wouldn't take as much expense to develop than having to build up the grade to accommodate the proposed residential units. My final thought and statement is that I believe it is wrong to move to consider developing the parcel for eighty new residential units. If you wish to build new residential units, do it up at Elk Ridge, formerly known as the Villages. Ernie Rose, Roads End homeowner. This is from Cheryl Fullerton. Dear City Council Members, Mayor Anderson, and Mr. Chandler, I understand that the Woods development plan, already denied twice, is coming up for consideration again. I don't understand why that is being allowed, but want to register as strongly as I can my opposition to this plan for the following reasons. One, it is unnecessary. Lincoln City needs workforce and affordable housing, not more market-rate homes that will sit vacant because there is not enough demand. If you look at the number of homes for sale in Roads End for months, even a year or more, it's apparent that there are not enough buyers, either those who want vacation homes or those who want permanent residences. It is irresponsible to approve this kind of development at a time when the shortage of affordable housing is critical. Allocating eight of the units as workforce housing does not change that fact to any appreciable degree. Two, it is dangerous. Based on the evacuation of the Echo Mountain fire just weeks ago, when evacuees sat in our cars for two hours, it is painfully clear that adding eighty more homes, hundreds, hundreds more cars, and residents is adding to an already serious problem with egress from this neighborhood. In addition, if zoning changes, if zoning change is approved, and some of these homes were approved for BRDs, that could exasperate the problem by bringing in even more visitors and their cars. We have averted disaster this time, but if nothing changes but the number of people and cars, the city is courting a catastrophe. Three, it will make our traffic situation even worse. Already, we have cars roaring along Logan Road at excessive speeds all summer and on weekends. Adding this development will worsen the traffic congestion, especially in an area where the sightlines are already compromised. Speed monitors this summer, May twenty seventh through August first, recorded fifty-nine thousand cars going south and eighty-four thousand cars going north on Logan Road. All those trips originate outside the neighborhood and come in via Logan Road. In addition to this development, in addition of this development, will add thousands of additional trips from residents and guests. That is simply untenable. Four, it further endangers pedestrians. Walking on Logan Road is already perilous, given the load of traffic and the lack of walking paths. Five, it will overload our already stressed and aging power, water, and sewer systems. However, the development handles its own needs for power, water, and sewer, it cannot mitigate the additional stress on them from the rest of the neighborhood. Six, it degrades the value of the neighborhood. I can't imagine the visitors, let alone residents, driving into Roads End would find eighty homes crammed on this location to be an attractive site. They come for the beauty of our oceanside business, not to pass through a dense suburban development. I urge you to deny the application for this development. To do so, to do otherwise is irresponsible and wrong-headed. Thank you for your consideration. Cheryl Fullerton. This is from John Cheek. Dear Mayor Anderson, in light of the very recent evacuations debacle, it would be grossly irresponsible for the city to approve building any homes at the Logan Road and Port Road site. That site should be a park or second best, since the city desperately needs to both broaden and diversify its economic base, a commercial site with perhaps a Fred Meyer store on it. The next one comes from Maria McFarlane. The street we live on is just across from the Holiday Inn Express. Recently, we were required to evacuate from our home due to wildfires. That proved very frustrating. We were able to get onto Logan Road after a twenty-minute wait on at our street, and then sat fifty feet from our, our street for three hours before we started moving towards Highway 101. Of course, we weren't the only ones waiting our turn to go. There was no other route for us to follow to go towards safety. Ironically, during this, during the summer, we often have to wait while traffic flies up and down Logan Road and have to be most cautious trying to get into Logan Road. The new project, which is being proposed, would definitely have a major impact on our ability to get on and off Logan Road safely at any time. In addition, we only have one way out from here to escape during an emergency. Adding a much denser population to our local street would have a very negative impact on us and our ability to just get out of our neighborhood any time of day or night. Other reasons that we are against this project include, given the recent evacuation in Roads End, adding eighty new homes will greatly impact the ability of residents and visitors alike to exit the area when an emergency occurs again. No development agreement has been negotiated with Lincoln City. We have not seen the details of this project and to be able to properly evaluate its fit for the neighborhood. There is already a high volume of traffic on Logan Road, and the majority of REI members, REIA members listed traffic and pedestrian safety as their top priority in the recent member survey. The corner of Logan Road and Port Lane is already dangerous with existing traffic because of speeding cars and poor sightlines. Adding more cars would only exasperate the problem and further jeopardize public safety. The Roads End water and sewer system is aging and vulnerable to malfunction. A development of this size places significant stress on those systems and will negatively impact services to the neighborhood. Hopefully, the city manager, mayor, and city council members will do the right thing and turn down this request to build this type of project here on Logan Road. This is from Patrick Dunn. I am impressed with the statutory development agreement for Woods End One LLC annexation. I see that all three of my testimonies are included in the packet for the city council. If my previous email to Ron and Jay White did not attach this message, I am commenting on this portion of my nine-twenty-two message. I request councillors consider strong verbiage to this end that Woods One LLC would forfeit the land to the city if the property remains blighted more than two months after annexation. I also request a vegetation barrier to be part of the development of the property line with adjacent owners. After reading most of the agreement, I do not want to enter testimony nine-twenty-eight that would muddy the water. I am concerned with the timetable, packet page one forty-two of the agreement. Since the June eighth meeting, June, July, August, the most of September, Woods One LLC has done nothing visible on the eleven point five acres to show good faith. Adding up the time, it could result in the blighted property remaining such for four and a half years, twenty twenty-five if I'm still alive. And then, one, a song verse. And then one more year to start twenty twenty-six, and five more to completion twenty thirty-one. Again, I am at awe by your draft agreement and await any comments you could reply to help me guide any further testimony to the council. I am not against the Woods One LLC request for annexation, but feel strongly about the property's violation of FPA reforestation since two thousand and fourteen, my February two thousand and twenty testimony. Thank you, Patrick Dunn. This is also Mr. Dunn from, that first one was from September twenty-fifth, this one is from September twenty-second. I have a notice of a public hearing for the city council, September twenty-eighth to twenty, twenty twenty, six P.M., but do not see an agenda packet posting on the website. I understand noon Wednesday prior to the council meeting is the deadline for submitting testimony. I have prior submissions, but cannot tell if they have been carried forward from prior meetings. Therefore, I have attached those in my addendum. I have attached in general the council-established commitments from Woods One LLC to a plan and specific timeframe. The notice of the public hearing states Woods One LLC has added a statement towards this end. I request councillors consider strong verbiage to this end, that Woods End, or that Woods One LLC would forfeit the land to the city if the property remains blighted for more than two months after annexation. I also request vegetation barrier be part of the development on the property line with the adjacent owners. Patrick N. Dunn. This is from Patty Crowan. Greetings. I am writing this as a private city of the, citizen of the Roads End neighborhood in Lincoln City. On a Wednesday morning just a few weeks ago, we were directed by law enforcement through a megaphone to evacuate immediately. We were under a phase-three evacuation order and told we were in imminent danger and we had to get out now. We grabbed our go-bags, a box of important documents, a few mementos, and our dog, and left in both of our cars. And we then sat for hours on Logan Road, unable to evacuate the neighborhood immediately. The realization of exactly what one way in and one way out means was hitting home. The experience convinced us to rethink just how potentially dangerous our neighborhood is in the event of a true emergency. The city has much to learn from this experience and should be holding public town halls to gather experiences and develop actions necessary to be more protective of the residents and visitors in Lincoln City. One aspect to consider is how much pressure feeder roads can handle, particularly in areas that are most vulnerable to earthquakes, tsunami, and now fire. Annexation and consequent development of the property adjacent to and dependent on the same feeder road for an emergency exit is irresponsible and putting residents of Roads End at additional and avoidable risk. The construction of more, the construction of eighty more homes could generate a hundred and sixty more vehicles, all trying to exit on Logan Road through Highway 101. This, as well as all other developments, development within the city, needs to be placed on hold until the city reassesses its notification and evacuation plan and develops additional housing with existing residents' safety in mind. The development agreement provided by the developer is also problematic, since it provides little benefit to the city, other than a commitment to provide ten percent of eight homes as affordable housing. No other commitments are made, and much is pushed off to future approvals. The zoning as R1-5 is inconsistent with surrounding zoning and provides for attached homes inconsistent with surrounding zoning. I question why the developer did not suggest R1RE zoning unless their intent on proposing higher buildings, smaller lot sizes, and additional vacation rental licenses for the annexed property. Regarding the evacuation, or the evaluation provided by PBS, I would draw your attention to the following conclusions. Page numbers refer to the council packet numbers. Page one oh four, zoning requested is inconsistent with surrounding zones. The requested zone of R1-5 permits both detached and attached single-family dwellings as outright allowed uses. Also, this would allow for additional BRDs in the area. City council should deny the proposed request, and if annexation is approved, require the land be zoned R1RE to be consistent with adjacent zoning. This would eliminate the attached single-family dwelling option and require consistent lot sizes, building height, and setback requirements, which would also preclude vacation rentals in the development. Page one oh four, regarding specific information on building heights and lot sizes, one of the purposes of the SDA is to provide specific details of the project so that the city has assurances of the ultimate outcome of the project without having to negotiate in future approvals. Admitting the maximum building height and lot size and dimensions and leaving it to future approvals defeats this purpose. Page one oh five, no open space parks, et cetera, as required by SDA. The SDA does not include any proposed dedication of amenities, buildings, land, common areas, or proposed parks in open-space land preservation or dedication. Therefore, this content requirement is not met. Page one oh five, regarding mitigation measures, particularly those resulting from a traffic analysis. The SDA does not reference mitigation measures, development conditions, or other requirement other than general references to adhering to all city codes and standards. This content requirement is not met. Page one oh five proposes ten percent of the housing would be ADI. This is insufficient to meet the housing needs of the city, eight out of eighty houses, and the definition is missing and the offer in perpetuity also absent. Page one oh six, no timetable for completion of the development provided. Condition of SDA not met. Page one oh seven, section ten point zero of the SDA is the provision for the reservation, dedication, or donation of the sale of land for public purposes. In this section, the draft SDA reviewed, at the time of preparing this report, stated that the information is, quote, intentionally admitted to be determined through future approvals, end quote. This requirement is not met. Draft SDA only proposes one real contractual commitment, and that is to provide ten percent of the residential unit for safe or lease to people making a hundred and twenty percent or less AMI. Everything else is pushed off to future approvals. This is all that the developer is offering the city and is simply not enough, considering the impacts that come with developing this property. And last but not insignificant, I am troubled by a clear conflict of interest presented by the fact that the applicant for this annexation is also the interim planning director. Simply recusing himself from the presentation is not enough to alleviate the concerns posed by this fact. The city should hit a pause button on any future development in the city until they address the very real problems experienced recently with evacuation from, evacuation of the Roads End area. There is nothing in this agreement that solves the traffic issues, nothing that solves the infrastructure issues, and nothing that addresses the environmental impacts to habitats such as that it is on the property. This project and proposed development agreement are insufficient, incomplete, and pose a real danger to the existing residents in the surrounding neighborhood. There is, there is adequate land already in the city to meet affordable housing needs, so there is no need for the city to bring additional land into the city at this time. Thank you for your consideration, Patty Crowan. The next is from Cynthia Thompson and Elaine Welch. Dear Mayor and City Council Members, we are writing to request that the Lincoln City Council deny the application of the Woods development for annexation and zoning change at this time, and at a minimum, seek a continuance in order to properly research what is being proposed for this development and to allow the public to have an informed understanding of this development. This application fails to meet a number of key issues we view as important for the future development plans of this neighborhood. No one we are acquainted with has received adequate public notice of this hearing. It does not appear to have included a negotiated development agreement. There are a few details about what and how, and how is to be built, other than maybe seventy to eighty homes, depending on the zoning request, that they are able to give from the, from the council. There is a vague promise for workforce housing, but no absolute commitment. It appears that it might include eight houses. Eight houses is miniscule. Does a need exist for this type of housing in the north end of Lincoln City, which is already very dense? Why is a current employee to the city proposing this development? The development will only add additional traffic on Logan Road, which is already heavily trafficked. The corner of the Highway 101 and Logan Road is the busiest intersection in Lincoln City. An additional load of traffic for eighty-plus cars is a serious issue, both entering and exiting this property. It is already hard to manage traffic at this end of Lincoln City. This development will only increase that traffic load. Further, there is no sidewalks in this area which produces traffic hazard. Most importantly, the only ingress and egress Most importantly, the only ingress and egress to this property is at the corner of Logan Road and Port Lane. This is already a very dangerous intersection due to port sightline. Adding an additional traffic burden on this site is a huge public safety hazard and will hamper the smooth flow of traffic. Water and sewer infrastructure would be heavily burdened by this large development. We have been told that the water and sewer lines in the Rhodes End is very old and inadequate. The needs of eighty homes may not be met with our current system. Lastly, this property is very unusual in that it is more like a very deep pit than a semi-flat land. It would seem prudent to request engineering reports on this project and future plans to ensure that proper drainage and foundation can be incorporated to protect the investment of future homeowners. The term "blight" is used to describe this area. It is not blight, and the vegetation covering it is now growing nicely, providing habitat for deer and other animals. One of the justifications contained in this proposal is that it will provide an "attractive" entrance to Rhodes End. Rhodes End does not need an attractive entrance. It needs less traffic, safe sidewalks, improved roads, and less traffic, both foot and auto, all of which this project will make worse. Cynthia Thompson and Elaine Walsh. This one is by Doreen Thirkel. Dear Mr. Chandler, I am writing to comment on the proposed development of the Woods, located at Port Lane and Logan Road in Lincoln City. I want to express my objections to this development for the following reasons. To my knowledge, Rhodes End community, which will bear much of the brunt of the impact of this development, has not been properly notified or given a full description of the proposal. Having exercised the evacuation of Rhodes End on September 9th, when traffic was backed up all the way down 101 southbound, as well as far down Logan Road, making an escape from Rhodes End slow, if not impossible at times, I feel that the addition of another sixty to eighty residences at the junction of Logan Road and Port Lane, a dangerous intersection on a good day, is alarming and boggles my mind that it can even be considered. If the proposal intends that traffic from the development would exit down Port Lane and then onto Voyage Avenue to Highway 101, that is just as alarming. I know people who are in standstill traffic trying to evacuate Voyage Avenue onto 101 as well. This is not acceptable. I ask you what could have happened if the wildfires had caused an evacuation on a weekend when tens of thousands of tourists have filled our hotels and motels? It's all ready, a disaster waiting to happen. Building development of the size proposed would endanger public safety, not only due to increased vehicular traffic, but also be highly treacherous for pedestrians walking down both Port Lane and Logan Road. It is dangerous currently as it is. Crossing traffic at that intersection is especially hazardous. Lastly, I question whether the utilities in Rhodes End are capable of handling another sixty to eighty homes, even if urban development were to be approved for Rhodes End. Expansion or updating of those systems is not proposed. I trust that my comments will be entered into the record for your city council meeting and public hearing on September 28th. Thank you for your attention. Sincerely, Doreen Thirkel. This is from Elaine Starmer. It is mind-boggling that our city would entertain putting eighty more houses on the street that is already over capacity for most of the year. The intersection of Port and Logan is already a dangerous spot, and this would only exasperate the problem, not to mention that our infrastructure and resources cannot adequately support the density that is already here. And I'm sure there is a great desire to get ten percent of those homes on the VRD list, since it would most likely get zoned to allow it. Have we already forgotten what Logan Road and 101 were like just a couple of weeks ago? Adding this amount of density to the existing constraints of one road in, one road out is unconscionable. I understand we need affordable housing, but you can't just plop it in the middle of an already overburdened area. It also troubles me that Richard Townsend was a paid consultant on this proposed project and is now acting director for our planning department. Sounds like a clear conflict of interest to me. Please do not make an existing problem worse. Respectfully, Elaine Starmer, Rhodes End. This is from Susan Walkie. Dear Mayor Anderson and council members, I am looking at the council agenda, and it appears the recommendations from the planning commission regarding Woods' application were to approve the annexation, but not the zoning slash comprehensive plan changes. I think the council should require a lot more information from the developer before zoning is decided. The proposed zoning is inconsistent with neighboring properties. Any development of this land will increase traffic congestion, and as we experienced on September 9th, the capacity of the existing roadway is inadequate, which could lead to catastrophic results. Yes, the city needs housing, but there is other land available. The subject property should not be developed at a high density. I believe zoning should be decided before annexation occurs, and I believe the city needs to receive more information from the developer before zoning is determined. Please require more information before making your decision. Thank you for your time and for your dedication to the city of Lincoln City. Susan Walkie. The next one is from Nancy Moore. As a year-end resident of Rhodes End, it is imperative to have a development plan for the Woods End project reviews by the neighborhood. With an eighty-unit development, doesn't the state have to approve any plan as well as the city? Has the area been officially annexed into the city? Please notify me of meetings on this project. Thank you. This next one is from Midge Hovig. Hi, Deanna. Midge Hovig here. It took me four hours from north Logan Road to Selette's River to evacuate. If I had to wait for eighty more from Woods residents, it would increase more time, plus sewer problems. Thanks for having our backs. Hope you and your family are well. God bless you and yours. Midge. The next is from Carrie Eggers. To whom it may concern, I'd like to voice my concern about the proposed development in the Rhodes End area. I urge you to turn down the development request. The addition of up to eighty units would make the area much more unlivable. We simply can't take the additional traffic without serious implications to the people who already own homes and vacation homes there. Please take this into consideration. Sincerely, Carrie Eggers. This next one is from Chuck in Betty Pritchard. We are extremely concerned about the Woods' development. We already have an extreme problem with limited pathways to exit Rhodes End. Adding eighty more houses will cause a severe burden to the way to evacuate our area. There will be additional access to 101. I'm sorry. Will there be additional access to 101? How about the difficulty of overcrowding on 101? Please do not allow this development to take place. Thank you. Betty Pritchard. This next one is from Sally Kissel. Mayor Anderson, Councilors Hinton, Parsons, Mark, Casper, Hoagland, and City Manager Chandler, I am writing in opposition to the proposed Woods' development. I believe that the construction of eighty homes at Logan Road would result in hazardous congestions on Logan Road and an already dangerous curve in the road. There are no sidewalks on Logan Road, and the increase in traffic should... Eighty new homes be developed would endanger pedestrians and cyclists. Logan Road is the only exit for homeowners, and the addition of significant traffic at that intersection would hamper evacuation efforts in an emergency. I am also concerned with the safety and sustainability of our water and sewer systems. Rhodes End system would be very vulnerable due to their age. Thank you for your consideration of my request. Sincerely, Sally Kissel, homeowner. The next one is from Robert Sherwood. As a homeowner in Rhodes End, I oppose the building of eighty new homes on Logan Road in one big development. Our community is being stressed by overbuilding, putting undue pressure on our water and sewer systems, not to mention our roads and evacuation routes in impending emergencies. Richard Sherwood. The next is from Bill Flynn. City manager, mayor, and councilors, attaches a letter you have received from Ms. Patty Crowen. We have included it because it is very accurately expresses our concerns as property owners in the Rhodes End district. Further, we fully endorse the Rhodes End Improvement Association's position in opposing the Woods' development as listed below. One, given the lengthy delays during the recent evacuation of Rhodes End, adding eighty new homes will further limit the ability of residents and visitors alike to exit the area should another emergency occur. Two, no development agreement has been negotiated with Lincoln City. We have not seen the details of this project to be able to properly evaluate its fit for the neighborhood. Three, there is already high volume of traffic on Logan Road, and the majority of REIA members listed traffic and pedestrian safety as their top priority in the recent member survey. Four, the corner of Logan Road and Port Lane is already dangerous under current traffic conditions due to speeding cars and poor sightlines. Adding more cars would only exasperate the problem and further jeopardizes public safety. Five, the Rhodes End water and sewer system is aging and vulnerable to malfunction. A development of this size places significant stress on those systems and will negatively impact service to the neighborhood. Add to these concerns that we find it appalling that we have received no notification of this significant proposal in the impending hearing, other than by word of mouth. While we are not permanent residents of the city, we are property owners and city and county taxpayers. We hope you will take these concerns seriously and objectively consider all criteria before acting on this very important matter. Sincerely, William Flynn and Judith Flynn. The next is from Victoria McComme. I am expressing my concerns against any development in Rhodes End because of the lack of safe roads and pedestrian sidewalks. Our experience during the evacuation was that it took almost three hours by car to get from our house on Port Drive to the intersection of Highway 101 and Logan Road. I also agree with the other concerned members of the REIA have stated in the message below. Thank you for working to make Rhodes End a livable neighborhood. Victoria McComme and Robert Crouch. She then goes on to list the concerns by the REIA, which I have already... As an attachment, which I have already read. The next one is from Annette Guido. Dear Mayor Anderson, councilors, and City Manager Chandler, I remain concerned. Reason, the proposed annexation and zone change for the Woods' property that I understand you'll be discussing in the council meeting on 9/28/20. There are a number of outstanding questions, but much more significantly, we have had recent experience of traffic congestion in case of emergency evacuations. Many residents living north of the proposed development sat in traffic for hours in order to evacuate during the recent fire. It will be much worse if cars from an additional eighty homes are added to the traffic between the egress from the neighborhood and Highway 101. Please pause on the decision until a public safety analysis is done and improvements implemented. The remaining questions have to do with statutory development agreements. It was to have been negotiated. It appears as if the development agreement is a draft. Who from the city has negotiated with the developers, and their representative to make sure that the interests of the city are secured? Are the interests of the city secured by the promise of only ten percent of units for affordable housing? This amounts to a guarantee of only eight affordable units. Is that all we can expect? Will the certain utilities bear the burden of so many additional homes? Are there sufficient guarantees, RE, and easement for drainage of the city's water tower? See my comments above, RE, traffic congestion, and note no plans for sufficient egress and ingress. Some of these issues were called out by the consultant that the city hired for review. In addition, the consultant made a number of recommended edits to the draft agreement. When do these occur? After discussion and approval, this draft should be negotiated in a clear and transparent manner with what the needs of the city to be attended to then returned to council for a decision. As you recall, the planning commission voted against the zone change. At a minimum, the council ought to consider zoning more consistent with surrounding neighbors, e.g., R1RE. A cap should be placed on any additional short-term vacation rentals in the neighborhood until the public safety, including a traffic and evacuation plan, can be addressed. Finally, I respectfully request that my letter be read into the record. Also, I request that you allow the public to make a brief oral comments via Zoom or phone, as long as the COVID pandemic makes it risky for us to appear in person to comment orally. Thank you much. This one is also from Annette Guido. Dear Mr. Mayor, councilors, and City Manager Chandler, I am writing today to express my concerns, RE, matter of your agenda today, namely the annexation and zone change request relative to the 11.15 acre site near northwest Logan Road. I urge you to send this back for further review and require the applicant and their consultant to follow appropriate practices that will give you and your city more secure assurances that they will follow through on indications they have made. The analysis done by planning staff indicates that although the applicant states a willingness to provide "a substantial portion of the workforce housing in the property's development mix," those intentions are not binding unless the statutory development agreement is approved by the city council. That has not happened, as far as I see in the documents available. Also, the staff note that "the applicant's expression of willingness to provide an easement for drainage of the city water tower," is not binding either. Furthermore, the staff note that the proposed subdivision plans that the applicant submitted are also not binding unless and until there is a status development agreement. If such a statutory agreement has actually been reached, then it would seem appropriate to give the planning department time to analysis and report on so that... Department time to analysis and report on so that the public can actually be informed prior to you making a decision, RE, annexation. I do understand that the city is in need of housing, especially workforce housing, but it will be very costly to make improvements to roadways that will be required to accommodate the traffic flow on Logan Road and Port to accommodate a development of the size envisioned. This must be clearly understood and accommodated by the city. That is crucial to do before annexing this property, which has been described as an "island of county property." Plans for egress and ingress to this island, "island," must be clearly understood before you can make a wise decision, RE, annexation. I am concerned that the utilities may also not readily bear up to the demands of additional households without further investment. Meanwhile, there are many other buildable parcels located within the current bounds of the city. The villages already have roads. What is happening to the building there? The final point I want to make is, RE, city goals eight and 11. Although landscaping may yield something more pleasing than current site, it is not a given. Those of us who recall the mature trees that were ripped out recall a very pleasing natural landscape that will not be replaced. However, a preserved wetland, hard to see how it could actually be developed otherwise, and some residential landscaping is not sufficient to replace the reforestation that should have been pursued after the area was clear-cut years ago. There should be direct... There should be direction to the developer to attend to this requirement of reforestation with the binding comment commitments before annexation is seriously considered. Thank you for your consideration, Annette Guido. The next one is from Julia Portaro. I strongly urge you to vote against developing housing units in Roads End. I recently moved to the city and must drive down Logan Road every day. The road is already heavily congested, especially during weekends and during summer. The development of housing will only make matters worse. I am also worried about the wildlife who potentially occupy that space. So many species have been displaced due to the fires, especially the Echo Mountain Fire. I am gravely concerned about the potential urban sprawl of this beautiful city. We have a fantastic community here surrounded by beautiful land. The development of this land could lead to further development of BLM lands that deserve to be protected. I know there are many members of the community here that agree. Please consider voting against developing this land. Thank you, Julia Portaro. The final one is from Connor Schultz. Please do not approve 80 residential units on this site. During the evacuation, my family and I were stuck on the road for three hours without moving, watching people abandon their cars and flee toward the beach or try going along the road on foot. The casino and other renting houses around here have caused traffic around the corner already. The bus stop causes a major backup during the summer months. Keeping the limit of houses to around 20 would be far, would be a far better option and not congest the roads nearly as much. The natural area should be kept within the, within this area as well as housing. Road End is a special place to me. This development would be devastating. Sincerely, Connor Schultz. That's it, Mayor.
Thank you, Ron. I don't think an apology is enough. I think next time we do this, we're going to get you three or four council members in your office to help you read those. I appreciate you doing that.
Thank you.
How about if we ask the question of including any other testimony from representatives of public agencies? I'm assuming there's none in the chamber, Tony?
There is nobody here, but Mr. Parsons, Mr. Palmer, myself, and CJ.
All right, thank you. And Ron, I assume nothing came in from an agency or anything?
No, sir.
All right, thank you. Let's see, Steve, we'll give you a, any rebuttal? Are you so anxious to jump in?
I'll start off and then I'll turn it over to Steve to see if he has anything to say. One of the things that I, that I do want to point out is that the property is within the city's urban growth boundary. It is surrounded by city property. It will at some point be developed. We certainly understand the concerns of those in the area regarding traffic and obviously evacuation is a major concern. The events of a couple of weeks ago certainly highlighted that issue. They're issues that certainly we take seriously. And that's one of the points of a traffic study, to figure out best ways in, best ways out, and what is the capacity of, what are the capacities of the surrounding roads? So it's something that we will take a look at. As I mentioned earlier, it's just not at this point easy or appropriate for us to identify those impacts and what the mitigations might be until there's a firm development plan in place. And Steve, with, with that, I'll turn it over to you if you have any closing remarks for the evening. Oh, one last thing, I'm sorry. Richard, in terms of your proposed schedule of, I don't know where it went here, but whatever that date is, that works fine for us in terms of getting back in touch with the city.
I had some time in listening to the comments to reconsider that, and I actually think that the city and the applicant should basically, for the record, by the 19th of October, what it is that they've come to in terms of the agreement. And then any member of the public that wanted to comment on that would have until the five o'clock on the 26th. So that way they were not criticized for leaving the public out of what exactly is being proposed since we're going to be creating some additional text which the public will want to have an opportunity to comment about.
Certainly.
So, so that might be my alternative is that we leave the record open to October 26th at five o'clock and that we commit to enter into the record by the, during the day on the 19th and then post on the city's website the form of agreement that we've come to by that time so that we could obtain public comment as is required.
Certainly. That works for us.
What we do, Anne Marie?
Yes, I have a quick question for Mr. Appicello. I know that the annexation and the statutory development agreement are both legislative, so they're not subject to the 120-day rule. The zone change is. We are bound by state law to provide a decision on the zone change within 245 days of completeness, which completeness was January 16th.
I believe the zone change is, the zone change is subject to the prior approval of the legis, land use action, so.
Okay.
You can't have a quasi judicial zone change if you don't have the land use, so I think that is not subject to the 120-day by virtue of the fact it is subject to a land use change.
Perfect, okay. I just wanted to get that on the record.
Mr. Woods, last comment?
Okay, hi, my dear.
Yep.
And so a couple of comments. One, my wife Karen beside me here grew up in Lincoln City. We have two properties in Nesko and we come down to Lincoln City pretty often. From what I understand, and I understand there is a traffic problem on Logan Road. There's no denying it. But from what I understand, there's about 900 houses already in Roads End. It's less than 10%. I wish I knew a way to route a road. I don't know how you go through the golf course or where you go, and some engineer can do this better than I. But it'd be wonderful if you had another exit road out of Roads End. I just don't know how you route it and where you would put it. And I certainly, I don't think we should be responsible for trying to fix that congestion problem because it's existed long before we purchased the property. We've heard a lot of things about the noxious weeds and the growth and so forth and that we should have a boundary and so forth. Well, we were told early on not to put a shovel into that dirt, not to do anything in this, until this was all approved. And I think part of that was from the prior owners who logged it off. But we've been told not to do anything with that property, so we've, we'd love to have excavators up there clearing it and getting it prepared. But, you know, until we get some kind of an approval on this, we're not going to spend those dollars. And again, our goal long term, we really want to make a beautiful community there. And we really think that it's in a great location to do it. I think there's no doubt that sometime in the future, somebody's going to build and develop that property. And if the city's really interested in having that as a park, as we've heard suggested from many people, come make me an offer. If the people at Roads End would say, "We will dedicate this, we will pay the money to put a park in here and improve it and make it nice, I'll sell it to them for the parts that we paid for." But I want something in writing that says they're going to do all of that because I think when you really went to those 900 people and said, "We'll put up your money," I think they would say, "Well, we don't want to do that. We want you to somehow give the property over to us." And I don't think that's reasonable. So we're ready to develop a nice property. We have the engineering people, David Reese and Associates in place. We've got the architect in place. We talked with Dan Kaufman of the excavation company about doing all the grading work and excavation on it. We're prepared, we just need to get some approval.
I understand.
And I apologize for keeping all of you up so late. This is a thankless job you're doing.
Thank you, sir. All right.
Appreciate you.
We do, I, I, I'm amazed you sit here and do this every month, so thank you for your service.
Thank you. ORS 197.763, paragraph 6A states that upon request, we counsel them to either grant a continuance for no less, for no less than seven days or hold the record open for no less than seven days to permit any participant an opportunity to provide additional testimony, argument, or evidence. Does any person who participated desire to request a continuance to provide additional testimony, argument, or evidence or request that the record be left open to submit additional written testimony, argument, or evidence?
Your honor, the suggestion is, is we leave the record open until October 26th at 5:00 P.M. And that further the city and the applicant agree to enter into the record by the 19th, close of business. Any additional language for the development agreement?
And that sounds great, okay. And I'm assuming the applicant agrees to that suggestion? All right?
Yes, Mayor.
Thank you.
Either a motion or unanimous consent to that.
So could I have a motion from the council to close the hearing? Keep the record open until October 26th, 5:00 P.M.?
So moved.
We have a motion from Councilor Parsons with a second from Councilor Ogland. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Any nays? Hearing none? Thank you. Okay. Let's see, we also need a motion then to close the hearing.
I thought that was to close the hearing and leave the record open.
All right.
You would basically have deliberations after, on the 26th.
Right. So clear that it was also to close the, oh, gotcha, thank you, Councilor Parsons. All right. So with that, we would then be back on the 26th. Right, is that our meeting, the 26th?
I believe that's the correct date.
Okay. All right, we could then move a next agenda item. Alexa, oh, oh. Sorry, Alexa, sudden, come on. Okay.
Your honor, I think the next item is an ordinance.
It is.
Okay, so this is second reading of ordinance 2020-22. Ordinance 2020-2, an ordinance of the city of Lincoln City amending the Lincoln City municipal code, Title IX, Public Peace Morals and Welfare. Chapter 934 signage to add additional exemptions for signage to be consistent with Title 17 zoning. We could not complete second reading at the last meeting because we had a no vote. In the time in preparing this, I, on page, packet page 150, I have a suggested change to change from four signs during the election period to eight signs. And that is because when I wrote the language four signs, that was a change from no limit. So previous to this, there was, basically the law is now, we have no limit on the number of eight square foot signs permitted during the election period. In the draft ordinance for the first reading, I had suggested a limit of four and then stated that you could substitute a 32-square-foot banner for, for those signs. Because of the limitations on, you know, around the time of elections, you see much more than four signs on properties. And so I, in rethinking that, I changed it to eight per legal parcel in an abundance of caution to avoid any restriction on speech. So that's my suggestion that now read no more than eight. Instead of four, such signs may be placed on a legal lot or parcel and in a commercial zone, a temporary banner sign not to exceed 30 square, 32 square feet may be substituted for four eight-square-foot signs during the above referenced 65-day period provided such banner is securely attached to a structure. So with that change, I'd ask for approval of second reading as modified and adoption of the ordinance.
Do I hear a motion?
Take the motion.
Okay, we have a motion to approve and accept the changes.
As amended.
As amended, yes.
All right, and we have a second?
One second.
Mr. Parsons, thank you. Discussion. Seeing none, hearing none. Tony, could we do a roll call vote, please?
Yes, sir. Anderson?
Yes.
Casper?
Yes.
Hinton?
No.
Ogland?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
Will she pass us?
Great, thank you very much. Next item of business is a resolution. Resolution number 2020-22.
It's 2020-20, I believe. Oh, no, it is 22, so there is a mistake in the council communication. Your honor, council, this is, your emergency manager and city manager asked me to create a resolution to authorize the essential designation of private property and some public property for emergency operations uses specifically for RV camping use. The planning department created some parameters for that. And so this is a resolution which declares that emergency, that there basically is a shortage of short-term housing based upon the fire that we suffered a few weeks back. Ron has already signed an emergency order, so you're basically ratifying his emergency order. If you choose to go forward with this, if you choose to reject it, then there will be no emergency along this line. Ron, is there anything you want to add to that?
No, no, I think you described it.
Mr. Appicello, Mr. Appicello, what is the resolution number then?
It is 22, I just, the council communication has the wrong number.
What's the one I just made a motion on?
That was, that was, that was an ordinance.
Oh, sorry.
This is a resolution.
You're right, it's late.
Okay. All right, how about a motion to approve?
I'll make that motion.
All right.
Proven resolution.
Second.
All right, we have a motion to approve resolution 2020-22 with a second from Councilor Casper. Discussion, Councilor Hinton?
You're going to ask for comments before, so this is more questions about the
You're going to ask for comments before, so this is more questions about the ordinance rather than comments, but is, as I was reading this, is this only for R Vs? And my question comes from, I know that there's a need for FEMA trailers, and so this doesn't mention that at all. So I'm, either it's, it's just dedicated for the RV and then we're going to have a discussion later about the trailers, or should we have that discussion now because I'm confused?
Well, this, this was not in relation to trailers. This was because we had two private property owners come forward and say that they were willing to have their property designated for emergency operation uses, specifically temporary housing, R V park use. So that's, that's why this is here. And staff asked that Devil's Lake State Park campground be designated. Now, there's still some discussions apparently going on there with the state. We also listed the city community center, including the parking lot, in case that is required, necessary. And we also listed the existing designated spot in the urban renewal parking lot. Those three public locations, however, are, that section is differently worded than the private ones. That says it's subject to a future order of the city manager setting forth how exactly those properties would be used. The second properties are private properties, and that's where the attachments that the planning department came up with in terms of the process to establish that temporary emergency operations use.
Okay. And that, that's kind of how I understood it. I'm just, I guess my final, my follow-up question is then about the FEMA trailers and so I, oh, Mr. Townsend.
Yeah, we can always bring that forward.
We're in the process dealing with FEMA and Department of Land Conservation and Development, actually almost statewide on suitable locations for the FEMA trailers. That process has just started, but it's underway and we're well aware of the need for that and would be addressing that.
Counsel, if that becomes an issue, we can deal with it the same way. Ron can issue an order and then we can come to you in seven days and see if you want to do something like this.
On that light, I'm, I'm wondering, just out of curiosity, knowing we can always come back, but I wonder if even the villages should be included in this short list of public property?
It's up to you, again, we can come back if that FEMA trailer issue comes up.
Well, I, if I could just say, it has come up, and, you know, at least to me. So I'm just, I don't want us to be trailing behind. I'd rather, excuse the pun, I'd rather us be thoughtful ahead of time. And I'm with, I'm with the mayor that, you know, I think the villages, it might be an opportunity actually for us to get some more infrastructure in there and actually...
You would add a number four here, but again, this resolution concerns recreational vehicle camping.
Oh, yeah, that's not the same.
Yeah, if we were going to do it for, I would write a different order if we were talking about FEMA trailers.
Okay, so we can have a conversation about FEMA trailers pretty soon?
I think we can write the same kind of order for Ron and bring one of these to you if, in fact, it moves forward. But at this point, I understand this is a very large effort looking at the entire state, so.
Right, yeah, I'm aware.
In all likelihood, when you look at the FEMA trailers, it's not going to require me to make an emergency order and then have you ratify it. And that one will develop a little bit more slowly. And as Richard Townsend says, as we learn and become part of the process, we'll be able to bring that to you. This really was to look at some properties that are trying to fill an immediate need with the recreational vehicles so that people have a place to stay. And it's, quite frankly, it's being driven by a couple of very good property owners that are trying to move forward to get this done.
Great. All right. We have a motion with a second to approve the resolution. Any other further discussion? Mr. Council Mark?
Just a question on the idea of, I know it's a different topic now, but the FEMA trailers and the villages, would, would something like that require some sort of infrastructure that is not in place right now to handle septic and all that stuff? Is it would have involved more work?
Yeah, we've specifically been looking at the Fernwood property and the ability to, to use that, but it would require the extension of the water and sewer and, and possibly, I'm not sure, I haven't really talked to either Richard Appicello or Richard Townsend enough on this, it might require also the development of the road, paving of the road. So, so that's, that's the area that we're talking about. It's, it's the closest to being ready for development of the property we own.
Okay.
And it's also, yeah, sorry.
Why don't we stay on subject, the resolution, and take a vote? Tony?
Anderson?
Yes.
Casper?
Yes.
Hinton?
Yes.
Ogland?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Great. Thank you very much. All right, let's move to the COVID nineteen update.
Mr. Mayor, if I can, I'm just going to combine these two items together.
Okay.
And be very brief.
No, no, no.
There, it's late, and so I'll be just really brief on these. Just some significant things as they're pertaining to both COVID nineteen and the Echo Mountain complex fire. As I'm sure you are aware, the governor has approved and we move into phase two tomorrow. In two hours, we move into phase two. And, and that will, the biggest effect in that is going to be in the community center and, and in the library. Now, it's also brought up something and an opportunity for us. The election is coming up and, which means ballots are going to be delivered here, voting boxes are here and so forth. All of that starts being delivered to us on October nineteenth. We, as a staff, began discussing that today to try to make the process of the election as normal and as routine as possible as it has been in other, in other years, so that people are not being asked to do things that are differently, that are different from previous years. We'll be continuing to develop that over the next couple of days and we'll bring more information back to you to let you know how, how we plan to work that out. The other thing, the other two things I want to mention is that the county is, is now really becoming more focused on the recovery process. There are currently four hundred and fifty-nine FEMA applicants that are in the system. FEMA has two hundred inspectors for wind and fire damaged sites, and they have completed a hundred and forty, seventy-four inspections. The major planning efforts that are underway by the county right now are transitional housing, debris management, water systems, and set up a more specific disaster recovery center for each FEMA, FEMA applicant. And then finally, the other one that is significant is the executive order from the governor's executive order number twenty dash fifty-six, which is extending the eviction order that, that prevents evictions through December thirty-first. It was set to expire tomorrow. That has now been extended through the end of the year, through December thirty-first. And if you haven't seen the executive order, I can send that to you. It's six pages long, but it'll give you more detail. So that's all I really have to report, other than what you had already seen in, in my staff report.
Ron, I, I wonder, could, is there any plans to accommodate council coming back into the chamber in phase two and space?
Originally, as Ken and I discussed this, we, we looked at trying to keep things pretty close to the way they, they have been under phase one, because there's still several limitations. But we are re-discussing that now, and by the end of the week, we should have a more, there's going to, we're going to do some changes, I think, from what our original plan was. And that includes bringing, trying to bring you guys back into the building.
Great. All right. Thank you. Any, any other questions from council of, Ron, Council Hinton?
I guess I have to unmute myself. I just wanted, because this is under the Echo fire discussion, it is a question to you, Mr. Mayor and the council. I've been asked to join or included to join the, the governor's regional solutions coordination task force for this. Ron's a member of that. I believe Ken was getting corralled as well. But, and so I just, instead of me just joining all by myself, I just thought I would ask for your thumbs up that I do this and participate in that, in that committee. And they've, they've already accepted me. They've, I've gotten the hurrahs and all of that from, from the regional solutions, Sarah Means, but, and also from Katie Jacobson. But I just want to make it more formal than, than just be doing it. I want to, I want to be there for all of us. I want us to have a voice on, as council members on this committee.
Great. I, I see and hear no objection. I think that's a great idea and to have, have representation. So thank you for being willing to do that.
Thanks.
All right. Ron, do you have anything, city manager, you have parking restrictions?
Yeah, I have two items, one on the agenda, one I just needed clarification from earlier in the meeting. Tony, can I take control of the share screen?
Yep, you're good to go.
Okay. So we have talked about, you should be looking at our logo with some, with some writing on it. We have talked about last week, taking our show on the road to give public input as to parking. I wanted to tell you a little bit of how we did it. As I mentioned, I was going to turn this over to our talented I T people to help me figure out how to do this. First of all, the one is to gather people that are going to be interested and would want to participate in this. So we're going to start sending out the information this week. We'll do it through, and I'll talk a little bit more about this first one in just a minute, Lincoln City Facebook page, our webpage, my blog, press release, and then we can send out emails through our utility billing system. And it's basically what it's going to do is to ask people, to invite people to participate. Once we start getting information back, then we'll start creating neighborhood, neighborhood meetings to be, to be fairly small so that we comply with, with any COVID nineteen instructions or regulations. We, so the second thing is, we are ready to launch our Facebook page. We've actually had this in the works some time, but the last discussion we had with you was about waiting until after the election. But the most recent circumstances, as far as the fire goes, has caused us to rethink that. And, and we are actually ready to run this. And if you don't have any objections, we would start this this week and use as our first discussion point of, of the, this, the parking restrictions. And then finally, how we will hold the meetings. Zoom will be one way and do it, we'll do it. At city hall, if, under phase two, we can, we can allow for some gatherings. They still will require masks, they still will require social distancing, there is some limitation on the number. So we will, we'll make sure that we meet all those requirements. And then, one that I think is actually really quite important is onsite. If the weather permits and people are willing to meet onsite, it's the easiest way to show things of how the parking would, would work. And of course, we would comply with all applicable COVID nineteen requirements. So before I move on to the next one, is there, the next point, is there any questions regarding that and are you okay with launching a Facebook page?
Council Parsons?
Yay.
I was just going to say I'm all for launching the Facebook page. I was going to ask for that when it was my turn to talk, so.
Oh, okay. All right. Anybody object to launching? Sounds good. All right.
Now, the other thing that I had, city council, is just a clarification. From our discussion we had earlier about how to deal with public comments, what I took away from that is that, is that you want to have the people, whether it is, whether it's through remotely or coming to the city office to actually testify, which means we would discontinue the public comment email system. Is that correct?
Council Parsons?
I don't know about discontinuing the email, but I think if they want their full comment on the record and not to be read into the record, not to be summarized, then they should have the option to be in the Zoom meeting where our I T seems to be able to handle who's muted and who stays in or not.
And so what you'd, you'd say, continue to collect through public comment, but those would just be summarized?
Correct.
Okay. Who else? Council Mark?
Yeah, I, I agree. I, I, I think if there's a way to get people to join us through Zoom, then, then they're welcome to say what they need to say within the time limit, of course. But the, the reading of the, I think the emails could be summarized. And I am hoping that we can go back to meeting in chambers and then that would remove that, well, I don't know, yeah, I would think that would remove that concern.
Other comments?
I do.
Oh, Council Ogland?
Sorry, anyway, so I think that we shouldn't eliminate the public comment section, make it more clear that they will need to log in possibly or provide their voice and that it will just be, if you email it, it will just be submitted and that, that we need to find a technological way, you know, if that's video, you know, recordings or live on the chat with us or staff can play it back for us, it's a little clip, video clip, I think it's going to be, you know, a lot easier for them.
Okay. Council Hinton?
Yeah, I, I would just like to add that not everybody is comfortable with leaving their home. Some people are very, very uncomfortable with going to, you know, council chambers because I've had several conversations with people about this very thing. And I said, well, you can always go and speak at council chambers. No, 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 they don't want to do that because they're, you know, COVID is still alive and well. And I, for one, I'm not anxious to come back. I miss all you guys face to face, but this is working for me. I, I do not want that disease. And that's all I'm saying about that.
So I, Ron, I guess it'd be fair to ask Tony if there's, you know, a way to do that, the way suggested. So far, collecting comments and... that, the way suggested. So far, collecting comments and holding them at bay, or in Zoom, or a pre-recorded comments?
There's a, there's always a way to do this. So if, if it's your direction that we find a way to allow citizens to testify via Zoom, we could build a process that allows for that. So I, I, I could speak with David and my team and run it back with you guys, run it by you guys. But I think if you have citizens that are contacting you saying, I want to testify, you could simply provide them the Zoom credentials, and we could manage the waiting room. But I'd like to talk to David some more, and talk to Mr. Chandler, and come up with a plan and how to manage this. But I think it's doable if that's what you want to do.
I think it is. I, I think we, going through the public testimony, reading emails, shows that, one, it's worrying on one individual to have to read all that. And I, I guess the other thing is, people listening, you know, if they're stacked up in a Zoom, you know, I don't know what, what you call a staging room, and they hear the others testify, we, we don't get so much repeat of the same information, which I think would speed up the process a bit. And that's, that's what's concerning for me of the reading of emails.
We can, we can make it work. So we'll pump up the process and run it by you.
Great. All right. Well, thank you. So I guess that's, Ron, is that clear, clear? We're okay? Okay. All right. So then, any public comments? Nobody in the room, in the chamber? And nothing on the electronics, or Ron, that came in? Great. All right. How about councils? Keep it short. It's 10:22. All right.
We did, I just want to say, we, we did get one more comment. Did it go to you, Ron? Yeah, it went to you, Ron. I was at 7:26.
You're muted, Ron.
It did not come through the public comment email, but it did come into my, it did come into my, my regular email. Would you like me to read it?
Yeah, I guess if it's pertinent, I guess it is.
It's from Patty Cronin, and it states, it's short. It states, greetings, I find it disingenuous that you want people to come in risking their health in order to be heard while you sit at home on Zoom. Allow the public to join Zoom meetings, to make their comments, or read them in their entirety. Thanks.
Well, thank you, Patty. We, we're ahead of you. All right. Counselor Casper?
Yes. Well, needless to say, the 24-hour hold issue is moot at this point, in case we hadn't identified that. But I also wanted to let everybody know that October 2nd, our friend, Alan Evans, who is in charge of our transitional housing here in the city, is opening up a news center at the Waukesha Jail, and I'm sure you've all seen it on the news with Jordan Schnitzer. So that's pretty exciting. He's using that same model that he's using here with us in Lincoln City. And it'll be quite, quite a, quite an exciting adventure to have something finally come, happening to that facility. By the way, he, he paid $1 a year for that facility. And even though Mr. Schnitzer said it's not one of his best, brightest investments, he feels it was the right thing to do, and it would be paying back many thousands in help.
That's good. Great. Thank you. Thanks for sharing that. Anybody else to comment? Counselor Parsons?
Just a quick one. I noticed Mr. Woods brought up the fact that there's noxious weeds on his property. Just want to point out that the county and the city both have noxious weed ordinances, and they do affect properties next door. So if, maybe we can hit that a little harder on code enforcement, get some of these lots cleaned up, that would help with the situation.
Thank you. Counselor Hoagland? Nothing. Counselor Mark?
Yeah, I'm trying to think of the best way to say this. So I, we have, I know staff is meeting tomorrow to evaluate the response, evacuation, and we have a workshop scheduled October 5th, and we've invited public comment. I, I personally would find it really helpful if people who are sending in comments might, I mean, I know what information they were lacking, and I understand the frustration they were getting by, by not knowing, you know, what was, what was current. But I'm wondering if, if there was specific information that they wish they would have been getting, and how that might have helped them respond? Would they have responded differently that day if the information had come sooner? Or, you know, how would that have affected their behavior, I guess is kind of what I'm trying to get. And I think that would help me understand beyond just the emotional concern of the fright and the, and the anxiety, what, what they, they might have done differently if, if they'd had that information in hand. That, that would help me.
Good one. And they, hopefully they could turn that into Ken Murphy, at K. Murphy, and Chief Palmer for collection for the, the information. That would be helpful. All right.
I do have one thing. I'm sorry, I forgot.
Whoa, here we go. Okay.
I'm sorry. No.
Yeah.
It was because, unless Chief is going to talk about Sergeant Weaver, can we ask him about that?
He may not be listening.
It is late. I do apologize. I had it saved on another screen.
Cut down your screens.
Yeah, all the things that are going on. But no, is, is Chief going to talk about Sergeant Weaver?
Mitch? Oh, there he is. Steve?
Yeah, I'm assuming you're referring to our, it's 30-year anniversary this year?
Yes.
Yeah, Sergeant Randy Weaver, actually in July, hit his 30-year anniversary with the department. And I think that makes it 31 or 32 years with him total, because he started down south, I think, with Eugene PD before he came here. So, but, you know, he's been patrol officer, SRO, School Resource Officer, a detective, served on the LIMP team for a while, and, and for the last 15 years or so, has been a patrol sergeant for the department. He's an amazing resource, very knowledgeable, knows his job inside out, is a great mentor of our, our younger officers, and just an amazing asset. And it was very, you know, a 30-year anniversary and still out there doing it every day. It's a pretty remarkable career and what we've brought.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Does he have a special chair in that nice new building you've had?
Do I have a special chair? Or does he?
Does he?
Sergeant Weaver?
Yes.
A rocking chair.
All right. Thank you. Thank him. All right. Let's call it a night.
Oh, you're skipping me.
Oh, hold it. How could we? I thought you jumped in earlier.
Nope, that was under the emergency.
All right, you've got one minute.
I have one more thing. I've been doing a little research with a couple friends about helping to solve one of our problems during the emergency, which is information, something that Counselor Mark was asking about. And there is such a thing called the Oregon State Emergency Alert System Plan. The last version was completed August 1st, 2018, so it's pretty recent. And I have a list of stations that are nearby, are not nearby, some here and some there, but might be helpful for us to look at if we want to look at a municipal radio station, which I would like to talk about sometime in the future. But I just wanted to let you know that, that option is out there, and I think that might answer a lot of the issues and problems that at least I heard from people and I experienced myself when not knowing what was going on during that emergency.
Okay.
I have some, I have some scoop.
All right. So bring it to the work session.
Yep, I will.
All right. Given that, call it an evening.
Good evening.
Thank you all.
Good night.
Good night.